Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Could we have a sunshine announcement, please, Cam?
Yes, good evening, Chairman. Today is Tuesday, January 23rd in the year 2024. This is a Jersey City Planning Board meeting with a scheduled 5:30 PM start time. And in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been given to the editor of the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, and posted with the city clerk on January 19th of this year. This meeting was also posted on the Jersey City Division of City Planning webpage, and all distribution materials made available to the board were published and available to the public. And here is the sunshine announcement for marking into the record. There we go. Thank you.
Thank you, Cam. Thanks, Mike. Could we have a roll call, please, Cam?
Yes, Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner Gengeden.
Here.
Commissioner Cruz.
Here.
Commissioner Torres.
Here.
And Chairman Langston.
Here.
We have five commissioners present, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Could we swear in the staff, please, Mike?
I see Matt, Liz, Matt, and Cameron. Do you guys swear in the testimony?
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have correspondence, Cam?
Yes, Chairman. Okay, so we have eight items in total requesting to carry with preservation of notice. I'm just gonna go straight down the list. So, item 14 on the agenda, it's case P2023-0069. It's for preliminary and final major site plan amendment. The address is 180 10th Street, 543 and 1/2 Manila Avenue and 545 Manila Avenue. They've requested to carry with preservation of notice to February 6th, our next regularly scheduled meeting. Item 15 on the agenda, it's case P2023-0070. This is for preliminary and final major site plan amendment. Address is 204 10th Street. Address also includes 543 and 1/2 Manila Avenue and 545 Manila Avenue. They have also requested to carry with preservation of notice to February 6th of this year. Item 16 on the agenda, it's case P23-092, a preliminary and final major site plan. Address is 612 to 616 Communipaw Avenue, and they have requested to carry with preservation of notice to February 6th of this year. Item 18 on the agenda, it is case P22-129 for a preliminary and final major site plan. The address is 385 to 387 Communipaw Avenue, and they have also requested to carry with preservation of notice to February 6th of this year. Item 19 on the agenda, case P22-189. It's for preliminary and final major site plan with variances. Address is 216 Palisades Avenue. They have requested to carry with preservation of notice to February 6th of this year. Item 20 on the agenda, case P2023-0044 for preliminary and final, for a preliminary and major site plan. Address is 35 Fairview Avenue, and they have requested to carry with preservation of notice to February 6th of this year. And lastly, item 21 on the agenda, case P22-187 for preliminary and final major site plan with variances. Address is 191 to 193 Academy Street. They've requested to carry to February 6th with preservation of notice. And then we have one item requesting to carry to...
We want to go to the 20th.
Oh, okay, all right. Academy would like to go to the 20th. I think we can accommodate that. So, the 6th is looking pretty busy. All right, so I will note that item 21 on the agenda, that is again case P22-187 preliminary and final major site plan with variances. Address is 191 to 193 Academy Street. They're requesting to carry with preservation of notice to February 20th of this year. And last, last item to be carried is item 22 on the agenda, case P2023-0053. It's for a preliminary and final major site plan and interim use. Address is 675 to 695 Grand Street. They've requested to carry with preservation of notice to February 20th of this year. So that concludes the items requesting to carry.
Okay, thanks, Cam. Do you want to read the adjournments in, or?
Sure, yeah.
They're noticed already, do we have to read them in?
Um, why not?
Okay.
So, under item 6 on the agenda, you'll find adjournments, adjournments A through F. So, here we go. So, adjournment A is case P22-227. It is for preliminary and final major site plan with variances. The address is 605 to 607 Grove Street. They have adjourned to February 6th with preservation of notice. Adjournment B, it's case P23-020. It's for preliminary and final major site plan with variances. The address is 344 Second Street, and they have requested to carry with preservation of notice to February 6th. Adjournment C, this is case P2023-0082, a preliminary and final major site plan. Address is 681 to 685 Newark Avenue, and they have requested to carry with preservation of notice to February 6th. Item D under adjournments, it's case P23-032 for preliminary and final major site plan with a conditional use and C variances. Address is 791 to 805 West Side Avenue. They've requested to carry with preservation of notice to February 6th. Item E under adjournments is case P2023-0074. It's a site plan amendment. Address is 239 to 259 Cole Street. They've requested to carry with preservation of notice to February 6th. And last, under the adjournments, item F, it is case P23-070, a minor site plan with C variances. Address is 355 to 357 Sip Avenue, and they are requesting to carry to February 6th with preservation of notice. So, that concludes all of the adjournments.
Okay, thank you, Cam. So let's get into old business. We'll call case P22-140 is a preliminary and final major site plan for 152 Ogden Avenue. This was carried from the meeting on, it's not correct, but January 9th of 24. Cam, what, I'm sorry, counsel, what was the, the meeting where we actually took testimony?
It was on November 28th, 2023.
Okay, so we had taken testimony previously on November 28th. Okay, counsel, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. For the record, Charles Harrington of Connaught Foley, on behalf of the applicant, as the chairman just noted, this was originally heard on November 28th, 2023. It was carried to January 9th, 2024. We did renotice for that, notwithstanding that we left that meeting saying that it was not required, so I'd ask that they be reviewed and marked into evidence as well.
And counsel, I am going to receive the affidavit of the notification proof of publication with respect to the meeting here this evening. I concur with counsel that the notice was not required, but out of an abundance of caution, counsel has chose to renotice the application. It does appear to be in order, we can mark it as A1 for purposes of the record.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. And just before we proceed, I, I know for the record that Dr. Gonzalez was not here at the last hearing, so I'd ask that he represent that he read the transcript or, or viewed the video.
Indeed, I have, counsel.
Thank you. Okay, so, yeah, at the last hearing, we, we adjourned, there were a few open issues that the, the board wanted to hear more about. There was also a question about the driveway curb cut into the, into the property that was raised in the Jersey City Engineering Comment Letter. So, what we have done is we met with Jersey City Engineering Traffic and Engineering Department in the meantime, and we, they, they agreed to a relocation of the driveway, and you'll see that as part of the plans. It's on, it's in the plans that are on the portal, where we moved it slightly to the south, so that it is not conflicting with the crosswalk anymore. And you'll see in the, the new engineering comment letter, that comment has been removed. So, I'm gonna bring up our engineer, civil engineer, to, to speak to that briefly, and he also has a, a further exhibit to show the cut and fill operations, what is being cut and what is remaining at the property, so I want to introduce that as well to the board. Then, as the board may recall, there was a discussion about the bedrock and the depth of the bedrock and the load capacity. So, what has happened since the last meeting is we've had a brand-new report completed by Mr. Jundy of Jay-Z and Engineering, and Mr. Jundy will, will come, come and speak to that for the board and the other issues contained within his report. So, I, you know, beyond that, I, I will have additional witnesses. I have a structural engineer that will speak to the proposed foundations at the building and how they will work, and then my architect, Mr. Vandemark, will take you through the project. And as a reminder, we are, you know, the, the project that being proposed tonight is as of right, in that we are not requesting any variances. So, with that said, I'd like to bring up our civil engineer, Brian, I always kill Brian's, Leviskin.
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 Sorry, I'm... Just want to testify. You get tonight's going to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? I do. Sure. Brian Leviskin, L.I.E.B.E.S.K.I.N.D.
Mr. Leviskin, good evening. You were qualified at the last hearing. Is your license still current tonight?
It is.
Okay, thank you, sir. You're qualified again.
So it's just limited to, since the November hearing, we addressed one of the comments in the city engineering memo regarding the driveway location and the proximity to the existing crosswalk across Ogden Ave. So, since the, the last hearing, we had a conversation with city engineering and the Division of Transportation to discuss the relocation options to facilitate pedestrian traffic across the street and turning movements for vehicles in and out of the driveway. So, the revised site plan, which is on the screen, sheet C301 in the set, shows the driveway shifted 10 feet to the south, directly abutting the neighbor's driveway, which both the, the city professionals and the project team felt was a wise relocation for, for traffic reasons, aligning with the intersection, and also providing sufficient clearance with that existing crosswalk. So, the operations of the, the drive aisle adjacent to the, the garage parking is staying the same. The only difference is the, the curb cut off of Ogden Ave and the, the transition to that, that drive aisle. The 10-foot separation between the, that drive aisle and, and the property line, it was consistent with what we previously showed, and the, the entry access with pedestrian warning, lights, gate, apron are all, you know, consistent with the original design.
Nothing has changed with regard to the building or the, the parking spaces, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and, and then could you just maybe touch upon the exhibit that I, I referred to?
Sure. So there were some questions at the last hearing regarding the components of the PPOD checklist items, and in, in addition to all the documents that have been prepared to date for the site geology, the characteristics of the, the landform, we have provided this cut-fill exhibit to, to supplement, you know, what is written out in the engineer's report. And so what you're looking at here, which...
Sorry, before you go into the details, I'd like to mark this, I think you were up to A6.
That is, we are up to A6, but we marked the notices A1, the new notice. So, for purposes of the record, let's correct the prior marking this evening. We'll make that as A6, and now what is on the screen showing as Exhibit 2, we're going to mark as A7. Mr. Harrington, why don't we identify the date on the plan, the title of the plan?
Yeah, Brian, could you do that, please?
So the joint title is Cut-Fill Analysis Plan with a, a date of December 27th, 2023, scale of 1 inch equals 10 feet. And again, this is, this was not part of the original site plan set that was submitted as an exhibit.
You said dated December 27th, 2023, right?
Correct.
That is A7.
Thank you. Okay, Brian, could you walk us through this exhibit?
Sure. So, the color coding that you see represents the, a comparison between the existing surface of the site and the proposed finished grades. So, the majority of the site, which is colored in the light green and beige, represents a slight increase, you know, raising of grade or remaining the same. The darker brown colors within the building footprint signify the areas of cellar and, and below ground parking as part of the tray system. So, the elevations in red, note the, you know, the proposed elevations of those, those finished grades, and again, the, the color coding is the, the difference between the existing elevations per the survey and the proposed elevations of both the site and the building itself.
Any, any questions for, for Brian?
Any questions? Anybody?
No.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
So, the, the remainder of the engineering testimony that provided in, in November would still be unchanged, so, I mean, if there are any questions related to the driveway relocation or this cut-fill exhibit, I can answer those. I believe, all the other matters I spoke to at the prior hearing.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hagiannis, do you want to cross-examine?
Yes.
Chirons, have Ms. Hagiannis put her representation on the record, and then we can have her question the witness.
Do you want to sit down?
Yeah, I, I would like to, thank you.
Ms. Hagiannis, I think that mic, if you hit...
It should work.
It'll work. No, okay. Just gotta hit the button.
Testing, okay, thanks. Good evening, commissioners. I'm here on behalf of Riverview Neighborhood Association. And for the record, my name's Cynthia Hagiannis.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Hagiannis. The floor is yours.
Okay, Mr. Leviskin, good evening, how are you tonight?
Good evening.
So, you, you just testified about the relocation of the driveway, and I'm wondering, what, was, was the requirement previously provided in the engineering memo that the driveway be relocated a minimum of 30 feet away from the pedestrian crosswalk?
The, the comment that you're referring to, the 30-foot separation, is not actually a, a city requirement. By code, it's a, it was a suggestion for traffic reasons that does not exist currently, is not feasible in, in many lots in Jersey City. The conversation with city engineering and, and transportation acknowledged that, you know, the site constraints, you know, only allow for certain separation. The 4.1 feet that's currently provided between the edge of the driveway and the crosswalk was, was deemed acceptable, and we feel an improvement even from the existing conditions.
But just going back to the memo dated February 17th, 2023, from Li Shuan Wang in City Engineering, did he, what, what was the rationale for the original 30-foot requirement?
I, I can't speak to why they requested that, that number, but that, that comment has since been removed from the, the engineering comments, and, and we have been, have confirmation from both engineering and transportation that they are, accept the new driveway location.
So the city was persuaded to just dispense with the 30-foot requirement somehow?
Again, it, it's not a requirement that they were noting, it's, it's merely a, you know, an ideal separation for traffic safety, which, you know, in the conversation, they understood was not feasible in, in many cases in Jersey City.
Okay, was, was there any consideration of alternatives such as not having a driveway?
We reviewed multiple alternatives with the city and deemed that this was the best placement for the project and for both pedestrians and for, for vehicles.
Okay, and when, I'm, I'm just gonna read to you from his memo, because I do, to me, as a lawyer and in legal parlance, we would call this a prior inconsistent statement. Mr. Wang wrote in his memo, this driveway must be relocated a minimum of 30 feet away from the pedestrian crosswalk. And then that was deleted, that comment was deleted in his subsequent memo, which is dated today and just uploaded to the portal shortly before the hearing, and there's no explanation as to why he deleted that comment, and, and, and what, what is your, what is your understanding as to why he dispensed with that requirement?
Again, for the reasons I, I just explained, that, that this is not a, a code requirement, and in the conversations with Ms. Wang, we went over what was an acceptable separation, and we honored their request to keep the existing crosswalk location with the curb cuts on both sides of the street, which we have done, and made the adjustments, you know, with the, the driveway itself. So, I, I can't speak to, to why Ms. Wang, you know, had the comment originally, but I can tell you, again, it's not, it was a suggestion and not citing a specific land use requirement.
So Ms. Hagiannis, just for the board's clarification, the memo states that Ms. Wang reviewed the revised plans dated December 27th, 2023, and that comment that Ms. Hagiannis just read about the 30-foot distance has been removed from the latest city engineering comment letter.
Okay, and so now, what's the distance from the pedestrian crosswalk? How, or, or, let me rephrase that, how far is the driveway from the pedestrian crosswalk now?
It's 4.1 feet.
4.1 feet, and, and you had testified that now it's aligning with the intersection?
The existing driveway to the south of our site, which we will be abutting, is within the, the existing intersection with, with Ferry Street, and the suggestion was that to consolidate those curb cuts to look at ours adjacent to, to the neighbor's driveway. It is, the curb location on, on the plan is slightly misleading, and the actual intersection's a little bit north of, of where it's, it's shown here.
Okay. Do you have a way to point to it on your screen, just 'cause I, I, I'm not that good at reading plans?
So, the, the existing crosswalk and curb cut on the west side of Ogden Ave, that is all staying, and so what, what appears to be a, a little bit larger of a distance between that curb cut and, and Ferry Street is actually closer, and the, the radius of, of that is around where my, my hand is now. So, to answer your question, it's within the, it's opposite of Ferry Street.
Okay. Is, is it safer to put the driveway closer to the intersection?
That, that was our belief, and that was the, also the opinion of the city professionals.
Okay. On, you, you had just testified that now the, the plans are compliant with the PPOD ordinance's technical requirements. Is there any sort of exhibit or something in your report that summarizes the compliance?
The landform analysis, which was provided as part of the engineer's report, walks through each of the provisions of the PPOD and the site characteristics that I testified to previously.
Did you testify about erosion potential?
I did.
Okay, and you testified about load bearing capacity?
No, I defer that to the geotechnical engineer.
Okay. How about, um, depth to bedrock?
We reviewed that as part of the original geotech report, but I would defer those questions to the geotechnical engineer that we have.
Okay, okay, and I wanted to ask you about the, the cut and fill analysis plan. Do you, do you know what the actual depth of the maximum excavation required for the deepest portion of the basement or, and, and car storage?
So, the, again, the, the color coding on the plan reflects the, so the level of, of cut or fill, you know, comparing existing conditions to propose. So, the highest range that's shown would be a, at most, a 10-foot cut on, on the plans. Again, the, the geotechnical engineer can, can talk in more detail about, you know, the actual excavation and, and cut, but the overall characteristics reflected on the exhibit, it's approximately, you know, 10 feet.
But, but the cut and fill is your plan, right? It's not the geotech engineer's plan?
Correct. This is an, an overall representation of the, you know, the earthwork activities for the project.
Okay, so you're saying there's a level, so you, why do you give it as a level instead of actual, an actual measurement in feet and inches?
The, the color-coded ranges on the plan are, are two-foot intervals, so I'm saying the, the darkest brown color on here represents between a, a 10-foot cut and an 8-foot cut.
Okay. What is the volume in cubic yards of materials that will be excavated?
That is not something that we quantify, nor was that a requirement in, in the PPOD regulations. I, to be truthful, I think it is inappropriate to, to give, you know, an, an estimate of that volume, given the, sort of the design complexities of, you know, the materials that are on site, the materials that would be removed, the, the volume of pavement, volume of concrete, there's a lot of things that go into overall earthwork. A cubic yard of soil taken out of the ground and put back into the ground is not the same volume, so it's, I, I think unfair to, you know, represent that on the plan. So, the, the total areas of those cuts, you know, are shown in the legend, so you could, you do the multiplication and, and arrive at, you know, approximation... So you could, you do the multiplication and arrive at, you know, approximation of what that, that is. But I will repeat, this plan is simply comparing the existing surface to the proposed surface, does not reflect, you know, material adjustments, again, for the building slab, pavement, et cetera.
What, what methods are going to be used for excavation?
I would defer those questions to the geotech engineer.
Okay. So since you didn't calculate the volume, I'm not, I'm not sure you're going to be able to answer the next question, but do you know how many trucks will be required to export the soil that's going to be moved?
I did not do those calculations.
Okay, all right, I think that's it for my questions for now, thank you.
Mr. Harrington, do you have anything to add?
Just a few follow-up questions to clarify your discussion with the traffic and engineering department. When you met with them, it's Ms. Wang, right?
Yes.
Okay, when you met with Ms. Wang, you met with other professionals from the traffic department in Jersey City, correct?
Correct.
So this was not just a decision made by Ms. Wang, it was a decision made by the Jersey City engineering and the traffic professionals that work for Jersey City, correct?
Correct, the original review memos that we received from the city did not include any comments from the Division of Transportation. We took it upon ourselves to include them in this conversation to identify the best location for the driveway.
And I know the updated engineering comment letter is dated today and was updated today, but in fact, did you meet with them in early December?
Yes.
Okay, and a decision was made that this was an acceptable relocation was mid-December? Is that accurate? Sometime around that time?
Yes.
That's, that's all, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Anybody else, any questions? Sure, just, just on what was discussed there.
It's limited to the, so you just testified you met with somebody from transportation?
Correct, yeah, we met with Mike Mansell and Lindsay Schofield from, from transportation.
Okay, but then, did they, did either of them sign the memo that was uploaded to the portal today?
The conversation was with both city engineering and city transportation. All parties in attendance at that meeting confirmed that this was an acceptable location.
Okay, is any, are any of those people here today to testify?
Again, it reflected in the updated comment letter that this is, you know, no longer a comment from the city.
Okay, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to bother objecting, the board can weigh that however they would like to, but I do just want to note for the record that the other people are not signatories to this memo, and we don't have anything, you know, other than Mr. Leibeskin's characterization, we don't have anything evidencing that they were on board with this decision to relocate the driveway the way that, the way that it was done.
Thank you, Ms. Hagiyanis. For the board's edification, I have emails from the traffic department confirming that this is an acceptable location. This, this letter that they updated was a result of us asking them to, to put in writing, a formal writing, that they agreed on the location.
Okay, thank you, counsel. So the emails aren't for the board's privy. Obviously, you know, we have the engineering report, and that's what we go by, okay? All right, thank you, Mr. Leibeskin.
Thank you.
Okay, my next witness is Mr. Jundee, who was before this board at the last meeting. As I noted, he has prepared a, a new report, and he'll walk you through that and address the bedrock issues and the load bearing capacities and other issues.
Sure. Do you have any testimony tonight? It's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do. Nijem Jundi, N-E-J-M, last name Jundi, J-U-N-D-I.
Mr. Jundee was qualified at the last meeting and asked that he?
Yes, Mr. Jundee, good evening. Your license is current tonight?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir, you're qualified.
So Mr. Jundee, you prepared a report for the, the project, is that correct?
Yes, we were retained by the developer to take over as the geotech engineer of record for his development. So we, we redid the investigation on site via drilling soil borings and rock coring, and we prepared a report. In addition, we did a slope stability analysis for the, for the rock slope to see if adding the building would cause any harm to the slope.
Okay, that report that you're referring to is what's on the screen now, prepared by JC Engineering dated December 29th, 2023, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so could you, and you've reviewed the project, correct?
I wrote the report, yes.
Yes, and the proposed project that is being presented, okay. So can you walk through your report with the board noting, you remember at the last meeting, there were questions about the depth of the bedrock and the load capacity? Could you address that as part of your overview?
Sure, so the first thing we did is we took the borings that were done by Johnson Soil Company for the, I believe they were done for the seller of the property. We reviewed those borings and then decided that we will do three additional borings, two by the slope area, which is to the east of the site, and one to the west of the site, where the borings were taken all the way to refusal on rock. And then to confirm it's rock, we cored 15 feet into the rock in the two locations closer to the slope, and then we cored five feet into the rock on the west side of the site, which is closer to Ogden Avenue. And in both, in all three cases, the rock was confirmed to be competent, and it's diabase rock, and it's, towards the slope, it's about eight to nine feet below existing grade, and towards Ogden is about 11 feet, that's the top of the rock. And then from there, we cored five feet in Ogden and 15 feet just to qualify the rock type. So it is confirmed that the rock is there at between, let's say, eight and 11 feet, depending where you are outside.
Mr. Jundee, I think you just said, you referred to diabase rock. Could you clarify that? Is that, is that the bedrock you're referring to?
Yes, it's the type of rock. We have spoken in preparation to this geotech report, we have spoken to the project structural engineer to understand the load take-down of the building and how is it going to be supported. And basically, this building is, will be supported on shallow footings bearing directly on bedrock. So we're going to excavate down to rock and just put the footing to support the building. And in speaking with him, we also took the, the weight of the building, converted to bearing capacity, sorry, stress on the ground, which came up to be 1,500 kips per square foot, which is 15,000 pounds per square foot of load averaged across the whole building because that's what we needed to do, the slope stability analysis. So what we did, I'm just trying to go to the figure. We took a cross-section kind of in the central portion of the building with the slope information that we have from the survey, and we came up with a, a cross-section representing the slope, the soil conditions, and the rock. And you can see it up on the screen, it's cross-section A. We took that and ran finite element method using the Hockbrow criteria, which basically in rock, it talks about the reduction in shear strength. So basically, how much are you reducing the capacity of the rock by applying a load? So the first thing we did was assume there's nothing, it's a parking lot. So what is the available shear strength of the rock and slope, which is basically a factor of safety? And it was found to be 10.63, and that's called the shear rock reduction factor. And then we took the average weight of the building, actually, I'm sorry, the stress applied by the building on the, on the ground. And we applied 1.5 kips per square foot load of the building as represented here. And the shear rock, shear reduction factor was found to be 10.49. So it's a reduction of, give or take 1% of the shear strength of the rock, which is negligible.
And when you say it was a reduction, could you maybe explain that further? What do you mean, what caused that reduction or would cause that reduction?
Well, when you, and the, diabase rock is a homogeneous rock formation that is very intact. It might be fractured in the top, but is very intact at the bottom as a one whole mass. So if you imagine, it has a certain strength, and that was, and to exceed it, you have to apply a lot more load. And the shear strength of it would, the factor of safety of, to reduce that shear strength would take about 10 times more the load, basically, than we applied. And we are not changing the load being applied on that slope by much, only by 1%. So we still have available 10 times more to actually cause a failure because of the building than.
And when you say you're not causing any additional change, you're assuming that the project is being built, is that correct?
Correct, this load is assuming the building is finished and occupied.
And I might have missed it, I might have looked down, but did you state what the depth of the bedrocks are?
Yes, it's about eight to nine feet towards the slope or the east side of the property, and about 11 feet towards the west, which is Ogden Avenue. So it's fairly leveled.
And based upon your analysis and review and your analysis of the load capacity, do you see any issues with any of the foundation proposals to build this project?
No, no, we don't.
And is that the reason for that? Is that what you just explained, because it's not changing anything?
Yes, it's not changing the stress overall on the global stability of the rock, of the rock slope.
And Mr. Jundee, does your report speak to methods to excavate at the property and with regard to filling at the property?
Yeah, sure. The, the overburdened soil is basically more sandy and gravelly, can be easily excavated with an excavator, any normal excavator. And the project site already have two below-ground areas for the elevator, for the carpets, and we don't, we don't see any need or major excavation for the rock. So everything could be accomplished with just normal excavators.
And does your report address methods in which to excavate and the site?
Well, we would talk about it generally. If we actually tell the contractor how to excavate a site, that would be inversion of means and method, and we cannot redo that as engineers. There's a fine line between how a contractor actually excavates and how an engineer designs this means and method. We, we basically advise the contractors that you can excavate using normal machines and excavator machine like any other site.
Okay. Anything further you want to touch upon in your report?
No.
Excuse me, I don't know what the protocol is. I live up the street of two CDs.
Sir, we'll have, we'll have public comment once all the testimony is given. Are you a member of the RNA? So Ms. Hagiyanis can, can address any, any testimony given? Sure, I'm sure, Ms. Hagiyanis, you could handle that question? That's your client, right?
Well, Mike, the organization is my client, yes.
Sure. We need that on the record, so for the recording as well, just, just want to reiterate that for people, now that we're not on Zoom, right? Mike, did you get that? Okay. Okay, Mr. Jundee, that's your testimony?
Yes.
Okay, anybody from the board?
No.
Anyone? Okay, Ms. Hagiyanis?
Good evening, Mr. Jundee.
Good evening, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
All right.
Okay, so you just testified that the diabase is fractured at the top? Would you explain what you meant by that?
Yeah, any, any rock formation would have seams in it, fractures. But it doesn't mean that the rock is not stable.
Okay. And so, so what does, what do the fractures mean then?
Okay, so when you look at the rock mass, you look at the shear strength of the rock. There's two parts of the shear strength. One is the intact part of it, and one is the interaction of those fractures, right? And that's what the shear strength reduction factor is talking about. The weaker part would be the fracture. Any rock mass at the top of it, the few inches, will be fractured. As you go deeper, it will be more solid, and those fractures become far and apart.
Okay.
Being at the surface is, doesn't affect the stability of the soil because we're going to be resting a little bit on that. So it's not going to be affecting the global stability of a rock mass.
Okay, when, when the test borings were done, did you find fractures in the rock cores below the surface?
Yes, we did, and we used, I'm going to just pull up for you. We did RQD value and recovery, and you can see, it took us 11 minutes, eight minutes, seven minutes to core through the rock. In comparison, for example, if you have a sandstone rock, it will take you one minute to go, two minutes to go through the, through the rock. But diabase is so strong, it took, you know, 11 minutes, 12 minutes to go through it. There is fracture in every rock mass. There's no such thing as rock mass without fracture.
Okay.
We take that into account. Typically, anything above or close to 80% RQD is considered massive rock, meaning if you were to come and excavate it, you basically need hammers and dynamite to remove it.
What, what does RQD stand for?
Rock Quality Designation.
Okay. And, and I think some of the notes on the test boring logs did, did say that there was a, a flat to moderately dipping fracture inclination, is that correct?
Yes.
And do you know if the fracture inclination dipped downhill?
In our analysis, we assumed they're all doing downhill because that's the worst case.
Okay, so if?
Not opposite. Like if it's dipping toward Ogden, actually would help the job. We assume the digging during, through the slope.
Okay, so if there's a fracture, and I'm, I'm assuming, or I shouldn't assume, are these horizontal fractures?
Some are, and some are dipping.
Okay, so do you know how, whether these are continuous fractures or?
No, they're not.
How, how could you tell that with only three borings?
In geotechnical engineering, we cannot go and put a boring every five inches. So it, it, we, we, we look at the geology of the buildings, sorry, of the formation. We know how rock is fractured in diabase. We confirm it with the borings. It's impossible to know if they are all connected. The assumption is with the reduction we use from Hockbrow, it would reduce a lot and assume some kind of interlocking between the two, and that's how we come up with, with a mass global. And this method of analysis, just to let you know, is accepted by the port authority, is accepted by the past. is accepted by the Port Authority, is accepted by the past station, is accepted by the MTA, is accepted by New York City Building Department. This is not something just specific to this job or locality.
Um, and let me ask you, do fractures make the, the rock more susceptible to a landslide?
Uh, and if, uh, yes, they do. But that's why you calculate what is the factor of safety against landslideing.
Okay. Is the, and where is that in the report, the factor of safety against the landslide?
Okay, so we looked at the slope stability analysis using the Hook and Brown method. And it's called stress reduction factor. That method of analysis, and if you want me more specific. Sorry. Okay. So we came up with the quality of the rock, the soil parameters, all based on different kind of inputs from different federal highway administration, um, uh, Bowles Recommendation, Terzagi Soil Mechanics for the soil. Uh, we used the GI, GSI method, Hook and Brown, uh, failure classification. So in rock, it's, it's different analysis than typical soil because it's impossible to know how the fractures are. So different scientists and engineers develop different methods to work out how these things could be reduced to make an assumption of, to make a, an engineering model how it's going to behave. And that's what we use to input into our final element method.
And then, and then your model is on this final page here?
As I said, we did two things. That's the results of it. Sorry. I keep clicking on the wrong spot.
Sir?
Which one? All right, thank you. So this is the existing conditions. The, if you, if I can zoom in, you can read that, uh, the critical SRF is ten point six three. So this is the, what you have available for you against any failure on the slope. And the next thing is we compared it by adding the building. Uh, at the elevation, we're supposed to be supporting it. And that number went from ten point six three to ten point four nine, which is a reduction of less than one point one percent.
Did, did you, um, I mean, I don't, I don't, did, and you use some kind of software to generate this?
Yeah.
Diagram, okay. And I'm assuming you put some kind of number, you know, to, you put some kind of inputs into the software to generate this?
Yeah.
Did you, was one of those inputs pounds per square foot?
Yes.
And, and what was your assumption about, uh, the, the pounds per square foot for the building?
It's not an assumption. I spoke to the structural engineer. And we asked him, what is the weight pressure of the building on, on this rock mass, on the foundation? And the averaged load of the building, including like, because you have columns that have loads, you have slab that doesn't have load, right?
Mm-hmm.
So the columns may have a hundred kips and the slab may have forty kips. So, but in totality, the building will be applying about one point five kips, which is fifteen hundred pounds per square foot on, on the soil, on, on the, on the ground.
Did the Johnson soils report have another number for the load bearing?
You're talking about two different things here.
Okay.
So the allowable bearing capacity, right? By code in New Jersey, on diabase rock will be a maximum of six tons per square foot, which is twelve kips per square foot. That's a bearing capacity. That's not a pressure.
Okay, okay, I'm over, I'm, I'm, I'm in over my head now with the, the engineering. Okay, so, um, did your, uh, let me just move on to slope stability. Did you, oh wait, I have one more question about the fractures. Um, did you identify any location, uh, where there's a potential failure of the surfaces?
Or at the site?
Yeah.
On the surface, we couldn't identify anything at the surface. It's a gravel paved parking lot. We can't see anything.
Okay, um, let
We dug down, we, we drilled down a hole that is four inches in diameter, five inches in diameter.
What about the surface between the overburden and the bedrock that's shown on this diagram kind of right here?
Okay. Uh, what do you, what's, what's your specific question?
Um, is, is that the location of any potential surface failure?
Not from the building. Because the building, you see the bottom where the arrow is? The bottom of that, that's where the load of the building is going, not on the soil that you are identifying.
So when you're saying not from the building, would there be any other reason for a slope failure?
I, I can't tell you what, I'm not God. I can't tell you what's going to happen in the future if somebody digs there, removes there, re- regrade it. That's an open ended question.
Okay, well, okay, um, so, um, so you, you didn't, you didn't do anything to model the slope stability of the remaining overburden material?
No, because my load is being applied on the rock, not on, uh, soil. So th- this model represents how, but if you want me to interpret it right now, that's fine. Uh, you see the, uh, lighter bluish, okay? It's saying that we are relieving stress by negative two KSF, basically.
Okay. Why, why is, is that?
Because we removed the soil and we're applying the soil below the top of that existing surface.
Okay, okay, um, so, so the section of the slope that's going to be in front of the building, do, did you evaluate the stability of that just i- independent of the building?
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
Did, did, so there's a section of the slope in front of the building where the overburden meets the diabase rock, okay? Did you evaluate the stability of that section of the slope on its own?
I don't need to for building stability. My load is being applied eleven feet below the surface.
Okay.
Okay, so in a global sense, I am not putting any load on that soil you're talking about.
Okay, um.
I'm actually relieving the stress because I'm removing soil that was applying soil to the store.
So dur- but during construction, will that be impacted at all by vibrations or any kind of construction activity?
The slope stability?
Yeah.
Well, to be able, to be able to dig down that deep, they probably maybe have to use supportive excavation. Or they have to slope it the other way. But in any case, you are removing stress. You're removing load, you're creating a hole. So basically you had a sack of apples that weighed ten pounds and now you removed four pound of it. That sack is going to hold less. It's going to be stronger. It's, you're not applying, you're removing pressure.
Okay, okay, I see what you're saying, okay. So did you, um, look at, at stormwater at all in your analysis?
Stormwater for what?
Um, like the stormwater that's sup- going to be sto- stored below the parking lot?
I don't understand the question.
Well, you did a geotechnical study. Did you factor in the stormwater at all?
What is geotechnical has to do with stormwater management?
Um, well, I would think that, well, you, you're going to tell me, I'm not gonna, I, I think I'm supposed to ask you the question, not, not the other way around.
Answering your question because I need to understand it specifically to be able to ans- to answer you specifically, but
So sir, if you don't understand the question, just say you don't understand the question. Counsel, you have to rephrase it so the witness can answer the question.
Okay, so let me ask
And counsel, let's, let's keep this within the realm of the direct testimony, please?
Would, would introducing stormwater to the subsurface for groundwater recharge have an effect on the overall stability of the diabase rock?
Uh, diabase rock is impermeable. You cannot infiltrate water through it.
Okay, what about the impact to the stability of the overburden?
Again, the building is being supported way below the overburden directly on the diabase. How the water, stormwater management is being taken care of is that through the civil engineering, they're probably, uh, designing a storage system, redirecting the water somehow to meet the regulations. But stormwater is not going to impact the stability of the slope or the ma- uh, or the building. I am sure they're not recharging the water into the diabase. Right now, the existing site is a paved gravel surface. So when it rains, when it snows, the water just travel down and go on its own merry way on top of the rock.
Hmm.
Nothing is happening to the slope. It's been like that for ages. Same thing goes for exiting properties to the north and south. There's residential buildings to the north and south of this lot. And they've been sitting there for a hundred years, give or take.
Have you evaluated how this construction might impact adjacent properties?
We are well away from any of the properties, so we, we should not have an impact.
Okay, have you reviewed the conditions of those adjacent buildings at all?
I was on site when they did the soil borings for portion of it. So I took a look from, I cannot enter those buildings. We are not impacting them. We're not constructing a party wall or within five feet of any existing building.
And, um, did you look at seasonal groundwater at all when you did your analysis?
No, for what reason?
Um, how it might impact stability?
Hmm, no.
Okay, so
When we did the borings, we didn't find any groundwater.
Okay, so your, so your testimony is that the stormwater and seasonal groundwater won't impact stability?
Seasonal high groundwater is a definition made by DEP in New Jersey and actually other states too, to measure the highest cr- level of groundwater elevation measured in a soil condition or on a site. It's typically determined by looking at the, uh, uh, ions, uh, pebbles in the soil. When the water goes up and down, the, the soil loses the iron in it and it leaves orange marks, dots, basically. In this case, we didn't even find water table on the site and we stayed there in our report. So seasonal high is not going to factor in because there's no water table that goes up and down.
Okay.
The water only comes from the rain because it's an open lot. And then it comes down, it hits the diabase, it's not going to go anywhere. It's just going to follow the surface of diabase, in this case down the slope. And the slope as is right now, it's been stable for longest time. That has been a parking paved area for longest time. And by us adding a building to it, that's not going to affect it.
So, so water flowing underground down the slope won't cause erosion?
Isn't, uh, erosion is the action of water on top of the ground, not below the ground.
Okay, so, so water that's below the surface doesn't disturb and the soil on top of the diabase?
Right now, we did not find something that could be identified as a groundwater table. There's no sitting water forever on top of the rock. When it rains, the water just disperses, either coming down, moving down the slope on the surface or whatever percolates and stay on top of the surface, percolates down and then moves away. So there's no, if there was a water table constant over there, then it would be coming out of the face of that slope.
Okay.
But we don't have that condition here.
So where's the water go? I mean, you said it's, I guess I'm had, just having trouble following you and I'm going to move on in a second. You're, so you're testifying the water goes underground, it, or water falls onto the
Majority of the water.
Flat part of the site and then it flows down the slope. Doesn't it come out somewhere?
It just, as the, as the, as you move down the slope, right?
Hmm.
The water follows the rock. And, and if you move further east, the rock becomes sixty and seventy feet down and sometimes two hundred feet down, depending how far you are. And the water just goes there. That's where you find the groundwater table. But on a condition like this where you're next to the slope, there's no actual water table uh, that you could, it's, you need to de-water, for example, if you have a basement. Or you need to de-water during construction. It's not sitting water.
Okay.
Uh, just like in my house, uh, when it rains on the la- on the side, on the, in the backyard, I have a basement. The water just flows down, uh, uh, either follows the s- surface topography, whatever is remaining just pours down. Nothing happens to my house.
Okay, when, um, this is under construction, do, do you, uh, is there going to be any shoring?
For, for, to allow for the construction?
Yeah.
We're way ahead of that conversation. We haven't even started with the building foundation design and any of that. No one, uh, but given the depth of it, probably there will be shoring, depending on the contractor, how he like to approach the job.
Okay, okay, I think that's it for my questions. Thank you.
Nope.
Thanks.
Thank you, counsel. Mr. Harrington? Okay, thank you. Uh, anybody else? Anybody from the board?
Okay, then, uh, I'm going to move on with, um, our structural engineers, Jason Tarantino.
Yes. Uh, Jason Tarantino, T A R A N T I N O.
Good evening, Mr. Tarantino. Uh, we've qualified you in the past. Your license is current tonight?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified again.
Okay.
Okay, and just, uh, for the benefit of the board, Mr. Tarantino.
Can you, uh, just give a, a, a little bit of, um, your experience in Jersey City and some of the projects you've worked on that, some of which may be similar to, to the project that issued?
Uh, yes, so we've worked on, uh, I don't know, probably two dozen or more projects in, in, you know, in the Jersey City area. Uh, two, two, one of the projects currently completed is, uh, on Oakland Ave. Uh, overlook fifteen story building, uh, overlooks kind of Palisades and, uh, the, uh, previous railway. Um, we also have another site, which is a twenty-nine story building, um, two blocks over, again, along that, that same Palisades, Palisades kind of railway. Um, right up against, o- on diabase rock and, you know, dealing with some very similar conditions to the, to the site we're dealing with here.
Okay, Mr. Tarantino, um, have you had an opportunity to review, uh, Mr. Jundey's, uh, report?
Yes.
And have you had an opportunity to review, uh, the project that's being proposed at this site?
Yes.
Okay, and are you familiar with what types of foundation you would be proposing here?
Yes.
And could you speak to those types of foundations and if there are any issues you find with proposing them as part of this development?
Yeah, so, um, in speaking with the architect as well as the geotechnical engineer, uh, we had looked at the eight story building, took, we looked at a few different options as far as building construction types and, and we landed on, at least for the initial stages, a conservative approach utilizing cast in place concrete, um, estimated loads, um, I, you know, presented those to, uh, to Nezum for his analysis. Um, and, you know, we proposed the use of, of spread footing foundations for the, uh, for the support of the building structure. Those, those spread footings would be supported directly on the rock. Um, and we estimated on a, you know, pounds per square foot basis of roughly one point five kips per square foot of the, of the building area.
And is there anything unusual, uh, about the development of, uh, this project on this site that, that would jump out to you?
Um, no, uh, you know, standard conditions, you know, have Um, no, uh, you know, standard conditions, you know, having to excavate below grade. Uh, bearing the building on rock is gonna give you the, the highest bearing capacity, um, hopefully the most stable, stable foundation conditions.
That's, unless you have anything to add, I, that's all I have for Mr. Tarantino.
Okay, thank you. Anybody? Questions?
Just that last, uh, the last statement you made, uh, that, uh, in some cases you find it more stable when it's on bedrock, a solid bedrock like that, or found, your experience of foundations?
Rock is always gonna be the, the strongest bearing surface.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hagiannis? Nothing?
Okay, um, hi, Mr. Tarantino.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Okay, so, um, uh, not sure I can read this question. Okay, are there, is, um, will there be any excavation into the rock at all?
I believe there'll be excavation down to the rock, um, and I guess depending on where on the site, I think Nezum said there was eight, eight to eleven feet. I think they'll have to, to cut into the rocks lightly to, to get to the appropriate footing elevations for the proposed basement.
Okay, and will, will the foundation be, I guess, un, uh, enclosed in the bedrock?
Depending on the depth of the, of, of the foundation and the thickness of it, we may have to dig out certain elevations of rock deeper than other areas.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, counsel. Mr. Harrington, anything? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then, uh, my next witness is our architect, it was a large lead-up, lead-up to this, so we'll, um, take you through the proposed project.
Sure, that is Anthony C. Vandermark Jr., Vandermark V A N D E R M A R K, principal of the architectural firm of MVMK Architecture.
Mr. Vandermark, good evening. Pleasure to see you in person.
Evening, Chair.
And, uh, we've qualified you as well in the past. Your license is current tonight?
It is, Chair.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Vandermark, if you could just walk us through the proposed development?
Yes, um, I have two different slide formats, and I would like to mark the presentation format as an exhibit since we will be showing renderings and different, uh, existing condition photographs and aerials. So if we can mark this exhibit, um, prior to beginning here.
Eight, eight, I believe we're up to, counsel?
Yes, I believe so.
And, uh, Mr. Vandermark, if you could just, uh, describe what you are presenting to us as an exhibit? How many pages?
Uh, yes, we have a presentation slide deck of twenty-eight slides, um, which is a series of renderings, photographs, um, and graphics, uh, from the existing filing set um, that was on the portal, uh, dated twelve eighteen twenty-three. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna jump back and be, uh, forth, uh, briefly, uh, between the slide deck, uh, just marked as an exhibit, uh, and the pre-existing set that is filed on the portal, uh, that the board has in front of them. Just to talk about the building, and again, very happy to be here this evening, um, to finally actually speak of the structure and the architecture of the project as opposed to maybe the site conditions. We're here tonight to talk about, uh, an eight-story building, uh, it's eighty-five feet in height. Um, we are proposing as part of the structure fourteen residential units. Just going back to the actual, um, filing set, uh, you have before you. The site sits within the R three zone district, uh, here in Jersey City. The R three zone district permits, uh, multifamily mid-rise construction of this type. Uh, it is an as of right. It permits, uh, a residential multifamily format of greater than four units. It permits eight stories and eighty-five feet in total height, and that's what we're here, uh, this evening to present. The proposed site has thirty-nine thousand three hundred, uh, excuse me, four hundred and eighty-four square feet of site area. That is point nine acres, um, and based on that site area, within the R three zone, you're permitted upwards of a hundred and thirty-one units. However, tonight, as previously stated, we are proposing fourteen units as part of this application. The proposed project has two one-bedrooms, uh, and those sizes are six hundred and eighty-three square feet to eight hundred square feet. And we have twelve two-bedrooms here at one thousand two hundred and forty-five to one thousand six hundred and nineteen. We are proposing fourteen parking spaces, which is compliant with the current R three, uh, filing, um, regulations. Uh, that is at one-to-one. Um, we are proposing sixteen bicycle parking spaces, uh, on the interior. Once again, compliant with two outdoor, uh, bicycle parking spaces at the sidewalk. As part of this proposal, we have a three hundred and eight square foot, uh, rooftop amenity. We have a one thousand sixty-one square foot, uh, roof deck, which is on the eastern portion of the roof. We have a volunteered, uh, large amount of extensive green roof, uh, located at the eight-story. That total is one thousand two hundred and fourteen square feet of extensive green roof, which is the equivalent to thirty-eight percent of the overall roof area. As part of this application, the driveway apron, uh, as we go further into this presentation, we are proposing, uh, permeable paver system, uh, at the, uh, interior of the site to the southern portion of the structure. Going back to the presentation deck that we just marked an exhibit, the overall site, um, and, and, and I just wanna back up and just talk a little bit about existing conditions because I, I know the board has been looking at a, a bunch of two-dimensional graphics here um, in some different, uh, civil engineering plans. Let's really just talk about where we are, uh, briefly. The site again, uh, point nine acres, uh, boot-shaped, um, sitting in the R three zone. We have a seventy-foot frontage, uh, on Ogden Avenue. Ogden Avenue, as we all know, is a one-way street that runs north to south. We have an overall, uh, two-hundred-foot depth that runs to the east of the property. And from north to south, we have four hundred and ninety-two feet from side to side. So it's, it's a large parcel, uh, a lot of it, uh, is on slope, uh, being a gentle slope. Uh, on the Palisades, however, we're developing only on the pre-existing developed area, which is the parking lot. The pre-existing condition, if I go to the next slide, the pre-existing condition is a, uh, surface-grade asphalt parking lot with twenty-six parking spaces. The current, uh, driveway apron curb cut is mid-property with the pedestrian crosswalk directly to the south, uh, followed by the pre-existing curb cut for, uh, what is one forty Ogden. Going into the existing structures, starting to the south, which is a three-and-a-half-story masonry building, um, we have one forty Ogden, which is six residential units. Um, it has a, uh, a ten-foot wide curb cut with a ten-foot wide, uh, driveway that goes to the rear yard, as you can see, one hundred percent impervious. That's six parking spaces. In the foreground here, uh, of the, uh, slide before you, slide three of twenty-eight, um, immediately to the, uh, south of page, you have one fifty-two Ogden Avenue, which is a, uh, three-story masonry structure that is twenty units. Um, as you can see here in this graphic, that that building actually projects further, uh, closer to the slope of the Palisades and beyond the actual building line, it has an additional rear yard with concrete apron and a swimming pool. That building does have impact. Similar construction, not of the same height, not of similar loads, but you have to understand is that this construction was done a hundred years ago. And what we're proposing, uh, this evening is construction of current date with structural engineering of current time. And again, the red outline or the red boundary, uh, would be our building footprint here. Um, forty-one feet eight inches, uh, in width, uh, facing Ogden, and we have approximately, um, ninety-eight feet ten inches in depth. As you can see here, we are, uh, developing only on the northern portion of the site, and I'll get into that when I start talking about the actual site characteristics. There's a pre-existing easement on the site. That's why the building structure is to the northern portion of the property. And the driveway and the permeable paver system is to the southern portion of the site. Going back to pre-existing conditions, again, three-story masonry building on one fifty-two Ogden. Uh, this building has a cellar, so there was excavation involved in the construction of this hundred-year-old project. Building to the south, again, multifamily, six units, a three-and-a-half-story masonry structure, again, with a driveway and a, uh, parking lot behind the structure, uh, to the east. Directly across the street, we have Wood Place. Um, it is a one-way street that runs east to west. Um, this is the intersection in question, uh, to the previous questions that, uh, Ms. Hagiannis, uh, was asking Mr. Leibskin, is that, uh, this intersection, as you can see in this graphic, is slightly offset over our property boundary. And again, there's an existing, uh, parking lot with more cars than what we're presenting today, and the crosswalk is actually being moved to a safer condition. The current condition right now is that crosswalk is in between two pre-existing curb cuts, a parking lot, and the driveway apron for one forty Ogden. We are marrying those two curb cuts and then moving to the north, the pedestrian crosswalk. Pre-existing survey, um, the red line that runs north-south in this page is the existing utility easement, twelve feet in width. Uh, you cannot construct, uh, on this easement line within that twelve-foot boundary. Therefore, the building and the building footprint is located to the north of this easement. Um, and the building line itself, uh, runs to the sky, not within the easement boundary itself. Seventy feet in width on Ogden Avenue, a hundred feet in depth. On the park, the parking lot or the improved area with an additional hundred feet down slope of the Palisades. Again, four hundred and ninety-two feet in width, uh, of the property boundary. As you can see, there's a series of existing structures within the survey. Uh, the larger one directly to the north is the one fifty-two, uh, Ogden Avenue structure. The overall site plan approach, uh, the easement line highlighted in red, again, is running within the twenty-two-foot, uh, five-inch, uh, driveway drive-in. Uh, building is constructed on the northern portion, portion of the property. We have an eight-story predominant structure, but the first eighteen feet of the structure itself is six stories. When I go into the elevations of this project is that this developer, um, has voluntarily given up square footage and actually set the building back at the upper two floors to lessen the impact on Ogden Avenue, uh, to make it more contextual, um, within the neighborhood. As part of this, uh, proposal, again, all the way to the left to the southern portion of the sidewalk is the ten-foot-wide curb cut. Uh, directly, uh, to the north of that is the pedestrian ADA, uh, ramp system with new crosswalk. We are proposing one new street tree that's compliant with the Jersey City forestry standard. And, uh, the main residential entry is just to the north of that street tree. We are proposing, within our property boundary, uh, in front of what we are proposing, a masonry, uh, privacy screen. Um, we are proposing a three-foot-wide planter that runs from the, uh, driveway apron, uh, to our building structure. So again, uh, eight-story building stepping down to six, and we have a five-foot front yard setback that's compliant with the R three zone. Rotating the plan now, Ogden Avenue being to the left side. Um, all new, uh, street improvements such as, uh, new curbing, new sidewalk, the planter I just previously mentioned, the ten-foot-wide curb cut apron, uh, with the southern entry point for the vehicles. Uh, again, fourteen, uh, parking spaces, uh, within, uh, with their own, uh, garage compartments. Uh, up front here, as you can see in the garage, we have, uh, there's three cars, which is actually a mechanical system, which will be five cars in total. Uh, we are proposing one ADA, uh, compliant parking space with van loading. Uh, one at grade level parking space, and then again, a tandem mechanical parking system with seven parking spaces. So fourteen in total. Going back to the entry point for the vehicles, we are proposing a six-foot-high masonry wall with a slide gate, um, that opens and closes via key fob, uh, for the residents as they enter the driveway apron. On our property, on the ground, adjacent to the property line, will be a linear LED strip for pedestrian warning safety. On that wall, uh, adjacent to that slide gate or the entry point, uh, will be a audio and a visual strobe, uh, at eye level. So you'll get two different levels of pedestrian safety, one on the ground should somebody be looking down at their phone, and then one at eye level should they be walking, not looking at their phone. So we have, uh, double level of safety here. We have a compliant, uh, drive-in width. Uh, there will be individual garage doors that enter, uh, the individual garage bays. Uh, we are proposing a ten-foot-wide, uh, landscaped buffer with three trees to the southern portion of the property. We have a centrally located elevator system. We have two means of egress. And the secondary means of egress is set back an additional four foot ten, and that's at the northern portion of the property. The R three does permit a hundred percent lock coverage within the site boundary when it is compliant with the P pod. We are proposing a zero-foot northern setback, which is compliant with the R three. That is setback then to five feet on the upper residential floors compliant, uh, with the zoning ordinance. Again, we are proposing a eight-point-six percent building coverage, uh, way less than, uh, what is compliant or what is required, uh, by the R three zone at three thousand four hundred and fifteen square feet. Again, we have a, uh, a small apron behind the actual building footprint, uh, for pedestrians sitting, uh, looking back down over the Palisades to the east. This is a three-dimensional, uh, rendering prepared by my office, uh, in the foreground showing the permeable pavers. Directly to the right, uh, will be the ten-foot-wide, uh, landscaped and, uh, tree-planted, uh, buffer zone. Immediately to the right of that, to the south, a six-foot-high, uh, masonry wall, which will be skinned in the Roman-style brick, uh, which is complementary to the building that we're proposing here. As previously stated, each one of those, uh, garage bays will have its own garage door. And the building has, uh, a series of cantilevers that hold the easement lines, uh, and there's a series of setbacks on every other floor, and it's part of the building design. Um, as you can see here in the foreground, we have a buff-colored, uh, Roman-style brick, which is a pier system with an ACM, uh, horizontal planting at the, uh, building floor levels. And we have an aluminum-clad window system, uh, above. Proposed project, uh, within the building footprint does have, uh, car pit locations. As previously stated, that we do have, uh, multiple locations where there will be, uh, mechanical parking. Uh, these pits will be seven feet deep. Uh, there'll be a foundation below that seven-foot, uh, car pit location. We're proposing different utility spaces within the plan at a height of seven feet. And within the central location here, we have sixteen, uh, bicycle parking spaces. As you work your way up the building, um, second floor, again, to the north, pulls in five feet to be compliant, uh, with the R three district regulations. As you can see here in the upper portion of the plan, there is a roof below. That is a one-story section that is strictly used for egress. Each one of these floors are very similar. Uh, there's two units per floor. Um, to the left side, which is the red, which is the western portion of the building, we have a two-bedroom at one thousand three hundred and twenty-one. And to the eastern portion of the building, uh, we have a two-bedroom slightly larger at one thousand six hundred and nineteen. Second floor is the largest of the bunch because we do have a series of setbacks, uh, that are part of the building design. This is at nine percent building coverage at three thousand five hundred and fifty. Taking you to the third floor, again, uh, two bedrooms, uh, east and west, one thousand two hundred and forty-six and one thousand five hundred and fifty-eight. Standard two-bedroom, two-bath. The building itself, other than the architecture and the site characteristics we're talking about, is very straightforward with fourteen units. We have one outdoor space, which is a, which is a roof deck- We have one outdoor space, which is a roof deck at forty-three square feet. And as you can see, that's in the southeastern portion of the plan. The overall building coverage here is eight-point-seven percent at three-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixteen. The eastern portion of the building, as you can see here, has a series of butterfly cantilevers as part of the building design that rise out of the podium, which is the garage structure. Every other floor, you know, alternates as far as a roof deck and outdoor space for the residents. The top floor has one continuous outdoor roof deck. And again, as previously stated, we are proposing an amenity at the roof and a common area roof deck at the roof line. The materials here are a continuation of the previous rendering exhibit. We have a series of horizontal ACM profiled panels. We have aluminum window clad system, and we have a Roman-style buff brick color, which plays off of the existing conditions of both the beige building at one fifty-two Ogden and at one forty Ogden Avenue also. So there's a similar color tone that's within the neighborhood, and we are, you know, trying to complement that. I'm not saying to mimic, I'm not saying to copy, but it's complementary in color and palette to the pre-existing conditions. Going back up the building, fourth floor, two-two bedrooms at thirteen-twenty, sixteen-eighteen, nine-point-oh building coverage, and there's an outdoor roof area of one-hundred-and-thirty-five square feet. Fifth floor, two-two bedrooms at twelve-forty-six and fifteen-fifty-eight, eight-point-seven building coverage with a forty-three-square-foot roof deck. Sixth floor, which is the top floor of the full building footprint, at two bedrooms at one-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty and sixteen-eighteen at nine percent coverage. We have a hundred-and-thirty-five-square-foot roof deck at this area. At the seventh floor now, the building line changes, right? As the building steps itself back, eighteen foot-six, from the front of the building, twenty-three foot-six from the property line. This was voluntarily done by this owner, again, to change the scale of the building, make the building a little bit more complementary to the neighborhood. We understand that this building has great mass. It has great impact on this neighborhood. However, we think that this implementation of the setback of the design certainly assists in the impact of the overall scale of this building. That changes the splits here. The western unit at this floor is at six-hundred-and-eighty square feet, and the eastern unit is at fifteen-hundred-and-twenty. The overall building coverage is reduced to seven-point-one percent. And again, there's a very small area of terrace at thirty-five square feet. Last floor, eighth floor, we have a roof below now at the front yard setback, an eight-hundred-square-foot one-bedroom and a fifteen-hundred-and-twenty-square-foot two-bedroom, seven-point-four percent with one continuous roof deck facing east. The roof approach, as previously stated, we have a centrally-located amenity space at three-hundred-and-eight square feet. We have a one-thousand-sixty-one-square-foot roof deck. As you can see here, we have a series of green roof areas, both to the north and the eastern portion of the mechanical area. The mechanical area will be screened with privacy screen at a forty-eight, excuse me, forty-eight-inch-high privacy screen. I don't think it'll be visible with the building at this height and centrally-located behind the amenity. It won't be visible from any direction here. The overall building green extensive roof area, as previously stated in my introduction, is one-thousand-two-hundred-and-fourteen square feet. This is volunteered by ownership to make this a better project for better stormwater management, and that covers thirty-eight percent of the overall roof area. Going back to the exterior elevations now on Ogden Avenue, we have a Roman-style-sized brick, again, so it's a thinner, wider brick in a buff color. The windows facing Ogden Avenue have a aluminum-clad square liner system with a medium aluminum gray window inset. Directly to the left side is a profiled rose-colored ACM panel for decorative element that returns back into the window. We're proposing a floating canopy at the sixth floor. The sixth floor setback is at sixty-three feet, four inches. So again, the building steps itself back, eighteen foot-six. We have a medium gray-colored ACM floating cornice line. The building itself at the top two floors will be majority of aluminum-clad window system, but again, setback off of the front building line to change the scale of this building. The northern portion of this project will be clad in the Roman-style brick masonry with a decorative rose-colored ACM profile. Once again, that we understand that the visibility of the northern portion of this building has impact on the neighborhood. This could be, there's no requirement for what this material could be. This could be cement board, this could be stucco, this could be a series of different things. This owner has chosen to provide a more quality or better material at this elevation, because he understands the exposure of the northern elevation to the neighborhood and also to the east. Two-dimensional elevations, very similar to what I previously described. The setback again is at the top of the sixth floor. The seventh and eighth floors are setback, eighteen foot-six. It varies, there's some small bay projections at that setback. Materials that I previously described are listed above. And again, at the first floor, you can see the individual garage bays that the cars will pull into. Northern elevation, rear elevation, which the majority of the material at the eastern elevation, which is technically the rear, will be aluminum-clad window system with some small ACM or aluminum composite material accents. Daytime view of the Ogden Avenue facade. As you can see, there is a six-foot-high front wall with the slide gate for the vehicle entry point. Crosswalk is directly to the north. In the foreground is the one street tree in compliance with the forestry standard. And again, the side elevation, which is the southern, the masonry begins, and then it slowly dissipates and turns into the majority of glazing to the east. The overall impact of the building, another requirement from your checklist items. Site impact plan, as you can see, the massing and scale in the upper sightline, number one. Building is offset to the northern portion of the property. And again, the three-and-a-half-story masonry building to the south. Just going back to maybe some of the conversation and questions regarding this site and as far as excavation, I have done quite a few sites here in Jersey City. This site is unique in its way, because you have a driveway directly to the south, and then you have another parking lot directly to the north. And we do have approximately thirty feet of staging area within our property boundary. That typically does not happen. So, you know, construction staging and even all of the excavation itself can be dug from north to south. It doesn't have to, the machines or the material doesn't have to be pulled to the Palisades or to the east. Everything can be worked within the site boundary, not technically on the slope of the Palisades or above the crest line. So again, it's a, it's a unique situation. And I think between the structural engineering team, as you had previously stated, that we have just recently put a twenty-nine-story cast-in-place building right directly on top of the Bergen Arches with limited distance directly to that railway line. I think this is something that certainly could be achievable here on the site. In closing, in the shadow study, shadows through the march typically, you know, rises in the east, sets to the west. The building will have impact or cast a shadow in March midday to later on in the day, directly to the north. In June, typically on the summertime, sun is directly overhead. The shadows will cast pretty much straight down. And as you work both in September and then also in December, again, shadow lines are slightly longer, and the majority of the impact or shadow of the structure will be both to the west, which is the medical facility across Ogden, and then to one fifty-two Ogden Avenue to the north later on in the day. This concludes my presentation for tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vandermark. Just a couple of quick questions. And counsel, is that okay, or do you have a follow-up?
Absolutely.
Okay. Two questions. Screening on any of the rooftop units?
Yes. Agreed, and I testified to that. Everything will be centrally-located. We will have some condensers units, which is located behind the amenity space. And we'll probably have an RTU and a generator centrally-located. Everything will be screened and out of view.
Okay. How are the parking spaces assigned?
Well, one per unit. So again, I think, you know, the ADA space would be obvious should, in the event that any one of these fourteen units, I think potentially this would be a condominium project. So any of the ADA required units would be to the ADA parking space. And then the remainder would come on a first-come, first-served basis. But again, I don't want to speak for ownership on how they would be delegated or assigned.
Okay. The reason I ask, with that mechanical system towards the west of the building, I'll call it?
Yes.
So there's five cars that rotate through there?
Correct.
So there's actually six spaces, but five, there's one movable?
There's always one empty space within the modular. So there will be five trays, and the empty space, you know, rotates and dictates, you know, where the car is spit out of the garage parking space. But I think, you know, in this case, we will have, you know, probably the ability to even dedicate, you know, whatever garage stall will be opening for that particular tenant. So I think they can probably even take it the next further. It won't be a random thing. It'll, it'll be something that kind of appears at that location for that resident.
Okay, understood. Anybody else, questions?
Going back to the five parking spaces, are the mechanical devices that randomly picks? One space opens, there's six of them. How convenient, how easy it is to operate? Anybody just, or is somebody special going to be operating it all?
Oh, no. This, this, this will all be operational by the residents.
By the residents?
Obviously, there'll be a maintenance contract, you know, on this or a service contract that'll be done annually. However, it'll be done via key fob, okay? The garage door will open. The system will rotate with your key fob. The empty tray will land right in the garage bay, and the person will pull right in. So these residents, you know, because--
You're making it easy for a guy like me.
Of course, yes. And, 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 you know, just for the record, we have this system at various locations in Jersey City. I have one at six fifty Montgomery that's approximately fifteen years old.
And it works?
Oh, yeah, still works.
Thank you very much.
Okay, anybody else? Any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have nothing further for Mr. Vandermark.
Ms. Hagiannis, go ahead. Mike, are you okay? Yeah, right after this testimony.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Vandermark.
Good evening.
I just had a few questions for you.
Sure.
Okay, so you mentioned that there's a swimming pool on an adjacent structure?
Just from what I could see via Google Earth image, yes.
Okay, so what, was it the blue color that gave you that idea?
Blue color.
Okay. And then you had compared this proposed structure to one fifty-four Ogden?
I did not compare them. I said, one fifty-four Ogden is a three-story masonry structure that was actually constructed further east, closer to the crest of the Palisades, as opposed to what we're proposing here. Yes, it's three stories. It has a cellar, which is similar to what our cellar would be on this project. So from an excavation standpoint, that building has foundations. That building was constructed further east, and that building was constructed a hundred years ago. And I don't see that, that building slipping or any failure on that building today.
Are you aware it has a retaining wall?
I was not privy to being on the backside of that property. However, that retaining wall was constructed, I don't know when it was constructed, but it exists, and it does have impact on the Palisades.
Right, and, and are you aware retaining walls are no longer permitted on the Palisades?
We're not proposing one.
Okay. Could you describe the paver system that you had shown in one of your renderings?
Yeah, I mean, we could even stay on this slide. This is a paver system that allows water seepage through this paver system that goes directly into the ground. The pre-existing condition on this site is a hundred percent, on this portion of the site, is a hundred percent asphalt paving system, which is a parking lot. So that paving system sheet flows in every direction, whichever the parking lot is pitched to. So the current condition here is that the water is going to fall and is going to dissipate downwards into the soil condition. And eventually touch the rock.
Okay, and, and just going back to the size of the, that, how many square feet is the existing parking lot?
It's, it's approximately seventy by a hundred, so it's seven thousand square feet.
Okay. I'm sorry, seven thousand, you said?
Yes.
Okay. And when you're talking about water, I guess, are the pavers themselves permeable? Or is it, they're just spaces in between?
There's spaces within the paver. The, the paver itself will be probably some form of concrete material. And there's like a small gap in between these pavers that allows the water to drain into, as opposed to sheet flowing on the adjacent properties or, you know, into slope of the Palisades.
And, and, but then the waters, after the water filters down through the initial layers of sand and gravel, it'll hit impermeable bedrock.
And that was previously stated by a geotechnical engineer, yes.
Okay. So you're calling this a permeable paver system?
I'm, I'm calling this a permeable paver system, correct.
Okay. Is, is there a, is there a regulatory standard for that?
Not in Jersey City, no.
Okay. And are, are you familiar with any state regulatory standards for those?
I, I am not, but, you know, this is a site approach that kind of goes further into kind of stormwater management and green building technique. So again, it, you know, this is only a plus for the project, not a negative.
So, so are the pavers--
Counsel, if I could jump in real quick, regulatory by who?
The, the, the state, DEP.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, ultimately, this project will be approved by NJDEP as proposed by our civil engineer. So if this is something that the state regulates against, then this part of the application would be changed to a regular paver system, non-permeable. But I certainly wouldn't be presenting asphalt here.
Okay. Is this, so this is part of a, so the permeable pavers are part of a stormwater management system?
It, it's part of a green building technique.
Okay, and I just wanted to go to your rendering. I think it was on slide number twenty-four. Okay, and, and did you testify that the, the height of, of this building is eighty, eighty-five? The proposed structure is eighty-five feet?
To the principal roof level, correct.
And it's eight stories?
Yes.
And the, the building to the north at one fifty-four Ogden, how many stories is that?
Three stories.
Okay.
It's a taller three stories with a taller parapet line. But again, I'm not testifying to that height as part of this graphic. I'm testifying to strictly the building alone. There, there is a massing of similar scale to one fifty-four Ogden, but I'm not testifying that that, you know, there's a parapet line on that building, and it's a very tall, three stories above grade.
Do, do you know how tall one fifty-four Ogden is?
I did not take a measurement of it.
Okay, but just, to, to me, this, would you say this correctly, this rendering reflects that proportional relationship of the eight-story building to the three-story building?
I think when you look at the pre-existing condition of that structure, you have-- I think when you look at the pre-existing condition of that structure, you have a tall three stories with a very high parapet line and decorative cornice. So this could aesthetically be three and a half to four stories in height. It's of similar scale. I'm not saying it's an exact scale and I didn't put that as part of the record.
Right, okay. And when you designed this structure at 152 Ogden, did you take into consideration the design standards in our land development ordinance?
I always do, sure.
Okay, okay, thanks, that's it.
One question.
Sure.
Mr. Van der Mark, kind of to clear up the record. The existing parking lot there is, I believe, it's a gravel parking lot, is that correct?
Well, it is a, it's a parking lot that is in disrepair.
It's a little bit of both?
It's a little bit of both. It's a little broken asphalt, and it is, there is some portions of gravel.
Just wanted to clear that up.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Okay, thank you. So the time is 7:26. We're going to take a 10-minute break, everybody. 7:27, I apologize. Be back at 7:37. Just for the board's notice, we are under an open application. No conversations between us, no conversations with any members of the public. Okay? Thank you, guys, we'll see you in a few. Mr. Harrington, I'll offer you a closing statement if you'd like, or after public comment?
Yeah, maybe I'll defer to after public comment. Just note for the record, I have our traffic engineer here tonight in the event the board has any questions regarding that. And I'm not presenting any planning testimony tonight, as I mentioned earlier, with as of right application. The issue as to whether a variance was required or not was adjudicated by the zoning board, and that's under appeal. So there is no planning testimony.
Understood, okay, thank you.
With that said, that completes our presentation.
Thank you. Ms. Hagiyanis, anything else?
Yes.
Please come on up to the mic and speak.
Yeah. We have an engineering expert tonight, and then Kern Weisman's going to be a fact witness on behalf of Riverview Neighborhood Association's Development Committee. And then Roger Heitman's going to stand up briefly and talk on behalf of the organization's board.
Okay, and that's going to be under direct testimony from you?
Yes, yes.
Okay, understood, okay, thank you.
It's right there on the table.
I do. Sure. My first name is Jeffrey, it's G.E.O.F.F.R.U.I., middle initial M, last name Goll, G.O.L.L.
Mike, can we pause the record for one sec? I just left my iPad in the other room, that's where I take notes.
So just let me know when you want to pull up here. I don't know if I'll have--
No, in a little bit, yeah.
Okay. Do you want to bring your board, do you want to bring your board to her?
I don't know if that'll make, I think everybody else is--
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Okay, Mr. Goll, could you give the board your expert qualifications?
Sure. I graduated from Rutgers University in 1990 with a bachelor in civil engineering. I have a master's degree from the University of Wisconsin in engineering management that I graduated in 2013. I'm licensed in New Jersey and nine other states, as well as the District of Columbia as a professional engineer. After graduating from Rutgers, I worked for a highway engineering firm, which is called Dewberry now, it was a good kind of a day back in the, back in the day. I worked for Mellett Tullia Geotechnical Engineering Firm for several years. We started Princeton Hydro, our, my firm, I'm the president of the firm. I've been the president for the last seven years, but I'm a founding partner. We work in water resources and geotechnical engineering, water resources consulting and science, and both in science and engineering. I've testified before a number of different planning boards. I actually was qualified by the Jersey City Zoning Board of Adjustment. I'm actually just, I'm also one of the engineers of record on the Liberty State Park project. We're working for the, my company's working for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. We're doing all the geotechnical work.
That's fine, sir, you're qualified, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Goll, you heard all the testimony from the applicant's engineers. Did you have any opinion about the site plan?
Yes. One of the things that I'd like to start off with is some of the regulatory. We heard a lot of really interesting things about approaches to the proposed development, but I wanted to start out with what is under the purview of the planning board and what the applicant is required to follow in terms of the stormwater ordinance. Currently, the applicant has testified that they are considered, to be considered a minor development, and that was testified to, I believe, by the engineer in the last meeting for this. They talk about onsite disturbance and impervious cover, and I want to discuss that a little bit. So I have two, three actually different slides I'd like to show, and if I can present here. Yeah, there's, it's, there's two, it's two in one, so.
Ms. Hagiyanis, were these provided to the board and/or to Mr. Harrington prior to the meeting?
They weren't, but they're based on the site plans that were already presented.
Mr. Harrington, I'll hear you.
For the record, I'm going to state an objection to them because they were not provided before tonight.
They aren't--
Chairman, obviously, Mr. Harrington has not had the opportunity to--
Can we show it to him right now? And just, we have a big board, we can show you right now, actually, without putting it up on the screen? Can we just show it to him?
Ms. Hagiyanis, just let me state what I'm going to state, and then we will see how this plays out. So Chairman, Board, obviously, the objector has been known to both the board and to Mr. Harrington for some time. They have not provided these documents in advance. I have not seen these documents. I don't know that anybody on behalf of the board, any of our professionals, have seen the documents. I have no idea what they are. Mr. Harrington has not seen them, so obviously--
Yeah, if I could lay a foundation for what we're about to present, and I think then after it's been presented, the board can make a decision about whether they'd like to admit it into evidence?
So I don't know that the board even wants to entertain it, Ms. Hagiyanis, so that's what we're going to find out.
I don't think it's incumbent upon any objector to present exhibits in advance. Our exhibits are a response to the presentation given by the applicant, which was only completed tonight. And I don't know of any board in the state that requires an objector to submit exhibits in advance of the hearing.
Okay, Ms. Hagiyanis, but you were here in November. This gentleman is here tonight with exhibits that he prepared in anticipation of testifying, which is fine, no problem with that. But you now have a board that has not even had the opportunity to review them. Mr. Harrington hasn't had the opportunity to review them. So, Mr. Harrington, would you like to attempt to review these? I would hate to carry the matter and delay the proceeding because they have not been shared prior.
I would like to review them. I know a lot of times we've been spent tonight in November. Now, my issue is, we were here in November, so--
I mean, we received an engineering memo this afternoon that was uploaded to the website. I mean, you could say the same thing to the applicant--
That was not from the applicant, Ms. Hagiyanis. The memo that was received is from the city engineering department. So that is not anybody's doing other than city engineering, which this board will take full control of, so.
I'd like to review them briefly to see if they're just factual compilation of data, or is it report or analysis?
So with that, Ms. Hagiyanis, can you lay somewhat of a foundation so we know what we're talking about?
Yes, of course. So the site plan is just taking the applicant's site plan from its civil engineer and coloring in some of the squares to illustrate the square footage of the building footprint, the permeable portion of the site, the impermeable portion of the site, and the off-site disturbance, which is, our math is a little different than theirs, and we show how we come up with different numbers based upon their site plan. Oh, 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 I mean, our measurements are the same, but the way we interpret--
Let's keep the conversation on the mic, please.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, okay, sorry about that. So then, and then the second one is just showing our ordinance--
Are they edited, site plan drawings edited by your expert?
It's not edited, it's overlain with--
Fair enough.
Certain commentary.
Fair enough. The, that's one of the exhibits or two of the exhibits?
That's one exhibit, and then the second, the second exhibit is just showing our, what is required under our ordinance. It's a, it's like a screenshot of our own stormwater control ordinance.
Our ordinance being the city's ordinance?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Harrington, I have no issue with the city ordinance. To be honest, I don't think I have an issue with the comments added to the site plan if the gentleman was going to testify from those as having been his analysis of the site plan, so.
Yeah, I don't have an objection either. It sounds, you know, for the limited purposes of demonstrative presentation, that's my understanding of what is being done here, that I have no objection.
Just give us one second, please. Okay, so counsel, both of you, here's my concern. If there's some kind of mathematical work that's on this presentation, it's on this exhibit, obviously, Mr. Harrington's engineering, engineering experts should have access to it. So I'll entertain that, and, Mr. Harrington, I'll go back to you and see if you're comfortable with those numbers, but I don't want to make a rash decision tonight just because you're in front of us tonight. So if there is numbers on this, I certainly want your engineering team to look at these numbers and have some kind of qualified response. I don't think it's, it's fair to, you know, the board is the board. We'll take expert testimony. We've qualified your expert witness, we've qualified your expert witnesses. So there's expert testimony from both sides, but I think your expert witnesses should be able to review the data. Now, Santo, should that happen before we say it or after we say it?
So Chairman, if we're not comfortable proceeding because Mr. Harrington has not had the full opportunity to review and analyze it, then the board is absolutely within its purview. If the board is uncomfortable with carrying the application to allow the applicant's attorney the time to review these and confirm or object to whatever that calculation is, so that's absolutely within the board's discretion.
Eddie, turn your, please turn your mic on.
I don't find this funny. I just spent two hours of my time, and you're laughing there, and, what you call it, you should see the film. And it's, the truth of the matter is, we just announced that we would have a 10-minute break, and you had the mic in your hand, and you didn't announce that there was something that we could look at, that you could have looked at in those 10 minutes that we took a break so he could have rest. I don't find this funny at all.
I didn't, I've never, I've never said it was funny. I've never said it was funny.
Ms. Hagiyanis, we have a commissioner speaking, please, a little decorum and respect.
This board, since I've been on this board, if we walked in here today and they gave me an engineering report from the city of Jersey City, we carry that meeting. Because we would not accept a report that was given to us when we walked in. If it was posted on the data portal before we got here, we had a chance to look at it. But this board has always, since I've been on it, and I want to put this down for the record, has turned down engineering ports from Jersey City because it was given to us when we sat down here before meeting. Just want to put that in for the record.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I don't find it funny.
I understand what you're saying, Commissioner.
You don't understand what I'm saying?
I said I understand what you're saying, Commissioner.
So counsel, this is, you've had, and I don't mean this with any disrespect, you've had Mr. Harrington's exhibits for how long now?
Well--
You've reviewed the applicant's exhibits.
January 11th was the first date, his new, I mean, we've been here repeatedly so that the applicant could be given the opportunity to rectify a deficient application. We were here, I think, first in October, then in--
Yes.
--November after, as chairman, you pointed out, they didn't have the right geotechnical report, so this is not-- I think it does seem a bit imbalanced to me, I should just, and I am going to strenuously object to this. I do think that if you all take a look at the exhibit, or if Mr. Harrington's given, you'll see it's basically his exhibit, it's nothing new. And the math's not new, it's their numbers. So it's just a visual, I mean, that's going to help illustrate our expert's presentation.
If I could, because I'd like to move forward.
Sure.
I have no objection with them proceeding, and I could maybe reserve the right to rebuttal or to reserve the objection if I believe that my experts need more time. My gut is telling me that it's a presentation for demonstrative purposes, and he just has a different opinion as to whether it's a major development or a minor development.
That's exactly right, yes.
Yeah, I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel here. I don't want to, you know, throw this into chaos. I just want to make sure that all parties have access to--
Yeah.
--exhibits that are presented and have them beforehand. If Mr. Harrington is waiving that, I'm comfortable with that.
What, just to clarify, what is the policy? Because Commissioner Torres referred to, is there a, is there a formal policy, how far in advance exhibits have to be submitted?
Ms. Hagiyanis, everything has to be submitted and posted to the portal 10 days before the hearing.
That's for the applicant, that's, yeah.
Ms. Hagiyanis, please don't interrupt me. I let you talk, you let me talk. That's how this works. So the answer is 10 days in advance. For you to come in the night of a hearing with exhibits that you want to present in opposition to an application and not share them with your adversary before the hearing is upsetting. It's upsetting. So it should have been produced beforehand? You could have sent a letter two days ago saying, "We've just prepared this in response to what we got 10 days ago." But none of that took place. And to the commissioner's point, for the past 10 minutes, while everybody was in recess, you didn't even say to Mr. Harrington, "We have these exhibits that we're going to move." So that is the point. Chairman, Mr. Harrington wants to reserve, he wants to move forward. I don't know that the board is comfortable moving forward and Mr. Harrington reserving, but he is the applicant, and it's always in the discretion of the board how to proceed.
Anybody have an opinion?
If Mr. Harrington is okay with moving forward, and we have, they have a right to rebuttal, then I'm okay with that process. I think that'd be fair.
Mr. Chairman, I agree, yeah. If you're okay with that, counsel?
Yes.
I'm okay with that, too. I mean, if anything, it's just professional courtesy to have been provided before. I'm okay.
Same with me. I'm okay if Mr. Harrington is waiving that, and a rebuttal will be happening if he still wishes to.
Okay. David, you're outvoted, it sounds like. All right. Thank you, Ms. Hagiyanis, continue, please. Okay. You're, you're going to have to blow that up big for us. Our screens are much smaller than these screens. I will do that right now. Thank you. Thank you. Perfect.
Okay, so the one thing I wanted to, to really first cover on my testimony is the definition of major development and versus the minor development. Uh, he is correct in-
Ms. Hagiannis, let's lay the foundation, the chapter and verse for this exhibit.
And where is this coming from?
This is an excerpt from, um, our stormwater, Jersey City Stormwater Control Ordinance.
Ask the witness, please.
Mr. Gold, could you explain what, what's just being displayed on the screen, please?
These are, this is the language in the definitions of, of subsection 345-74 Stormwater Control, um, of the Jersey City ordinance, and it's in the definitions that defines major development. And it's, this is, was literally copied and pasted into this document.
And is it the entire chapter and verse of 350 or 345-74?
Sorry. Um, no, it is just simply the definition and then I have, uh, on the next slide, I have further definitions of impervious and motor vehicle surfaces.
So it is the definitions of specific terms that you've taken out of 345-74, the Jersey City ordinance, and created this document using the specific terms that you want to discuss here this evening. Is that fair?
Correct. The only difference is I, um, bolded certain terms and underlined other terms.
No. No, it's, it's edited. It, it's an edited document now.
I, I don't know what that means.
You don't know what edited means?
No, no, I don't know how it impacts this. Is it, is there a concern?
Because there's certain deference given to certain words that isn't shown in the Jersey City ordinance. This, what you're showing me right now, and, and we shouldn't even be looking at this now, what you're showing me isn't the exact ordinance. There's, there's words emboldened, there's things underlined, yeah, are there quotes added?
No.
Okay, so those quotes are in the ordinance?
Correct.
I, I'm not comfortable with reading an altered document as evidence.
It's fair, Chairman.
Hey, can I explain why I did it or is it okay? I don't know.
It's, it's altered. It's not the ordinance.
I understand why you did it. I don't, I mean, I assume the reason you did it was to obviously highlight certain things-
Of course.
And, uh, I, I think we all understand that.
Yeah.
I think that, uh, the concern is valid as to whether or not the emphasizing of certain words in a document is, is fair or not fair, as opposed to just showing 345-74 in its actually enacted regulation and then testifying to it. So Chairman-
I'll take it away and explain it, if that's okay. I can read out of the ordinance and my testimony will be in, transcribed on the, on the video. That's it. I apologize, I had no idea.
I, yeah, I'm not-
I understand.
I, I understand the reason for it and I, um, believe me, if I was in your shoes, I would probably do the exact same thing. It's just, it, it's, as far as the board is concerned, it's not the exact ordinance anymore. It's altered. And, believe me, this board is more than familiar with reading ordinances. Um, so I would have no problem if you gave us the actual ordinance, but with anything highlighted, with anything emboldened, underlined, now it's, you're creating opinion out of it rather than fact, in my eyes.
Isn't it my opinion that matters here?
You're a fact witness, correct? Or, or you're an expert witness.
My professional opinion matters.
Sir, you're going to give an opinion, but again, I think it's going to have to come in verbal testimony based on what you've, and what you intend to highlight and bring to the board's attention within the ordinance. Uh, but if we're going to look at the ordinance, we want to see the sentence before and after and make sure, obviously, that the way you're interpreting that ordinance is the same as we want to interpret it in terms of whether the sentence before or after a sentence matters to the interpretation of that sentence. So, uh, I think that's the actual concern for the board. But with that, obviously, if you have the ordinance in its full text, you can share that and, or if you'd rather read and articulate it, that's acceptable, too.
I'll, I'll read it and articulate it.
Okay.
May I proceed?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it and I appreciate the consideration. So, under the definition, under, under section, subsection 345, um, uh, the, on the stormwater development, um, uh, regulations, in the definitions, this is rarely where the applicant has, has, has purported that the, their application meets the definition of minor development. If, I don't know if you recall, but in the last hearing, the applicant's engineers qualified disturbances, onsite disturbance and onsite impervious cover. Um, and obviously, I think you're aware that there's a major difference between, not to be, throw a pun out there, there's a big difference between the major and the minor development applications in terms of what's required. A minor development application requires, I'm sorry? Oh, okay. Oh, you don't want to get me into that. Um, but the, um, obviously, the minor, uh, the minor development or the minor development application really requires sort of like an approach to green infrastructure, doing what you can, green roof, uh, looking at permeable pavement and that kind of thing, but there's not really a lot of standards associated with, when you get kicked into the major development, then you have to actually follow the rest of the ordinance, which is the model ordinance for the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection ordinance. Uh, groundwater recharge, water quality, quantity, you know, um, um, reducing peak flows, um, and doing all the things that are required under that. It's a, it's a much more heavy lift, so to speak, onto this. So it is an important distinction to understand. Um, and I did read, you know, when I read the, the, um, the purpose under the, the Jersey City Stormwater Ordinance, this, the, the city said they, well, at least in the ordinance says, "It recognizes that the city has a, a combined sewer overflow, a C S O, and therefore, and a lot of the development that occurs is well under the threshold of D E P's minimum standards for putting you into a major development." According to D E P regulations, a major development would be considered, um, one acre of disturbance or a quarter acre of new impervious, uh, or replacing impervious cover or regulated, uh, motor vehicle surfaces. Um, and so I'm going to talk a little bit about the difference between those two as well. In Jersey City's case, because of their concern about the smaller developments and the cumulative effect, you took the model ordinance and adopted it and lowered the standards. So instead of an acre of disturbance, it's 10,000 square feet of disturbance. Instead of a quarter acre of impervious cover or, um, regulated motor vehicle service, uh, surface, it's now 5,000 square feet. So the applicant has, uh, proposed, and, and the reason I, um, had talked about that, there's, you really need to understand that difference because there's really going to make a difference. The one thing I want to clarify, there's nothing in the Jersey City ordinance that states you are to separate onsite versus offsite. Disturbance, uh, it talks about development disturbance, any disturbance. You go offsite to connect utilities, you need to, that's counted as disturb, you pull up the pavement to replace it, you know, you dig a trench, that's disturbance. Um, so that's important to understand. Same thing with, um, the, the impervious surfaces and/or the regulated motor vehicle services. And I'll explain what those two are in a minute. Um, and so those are as well. It doesn't, the ordinance doesn't distinguish between the two. If you're going to be replacing or, uh, putting in new impervious surfaces or, or regulated motor vehicle services, surfaces, it counts. Now, um, the one thing I wanted, I wanted to show on is, is can I pull up the-
Just for your, uh, knowledge, I'm the one that controls it. I need to wait for you to put it in and then I see it. So just, I see it on the HDMI. You just can't pull it out and in because I can't see it until it shows up. Okay?
Okay, sorry about that.
Yeah, I'll do it when I see it.
Do you see anything?
Yes, I do. Hold on, don't pull it out.
I'm having trouble in margin damage though. Okay. Um, this is, this is microscopic here. I don't know why it's doing that. Hmm, I don't, I'm not sure. Yeah, we, I don't know, um, I don't know why this is doing this.
I, I can try putting it in to my computer if, if you wish. I'll, I'll see if it works.
The first three are called L O D, the first three letters of the document. Sorry about that.
No problem. Okay, I think it's up there now. Oh my gosh, what's happening? Why isn't it up? This is amazing. All right. Extreme measures here.
Dangerous.
Thank you.
Off the record, Mike. Matt, is that our last?
Yes. It's his. How do I?
Correct.
I can see up here.
Let's wait for Matt.
Yes, correct, that is our staff laptop.
I just need to, is there a way to zoom out?
The, next to the number in the center, the one of one, you should see a full extent icon at the top, right underneath the-
Right here?
Nope. See, to the center of the screen?
Of the box with 10,000.
Thank you. All right, we've got some mic key down here. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Um, okay, so, uh, what this drawing shows is, um, the applicant's most recent, uh, it's actually the Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Plan. Um, and it's a little bit more difficult to see, but all the other elements of the project are still located on this. Um, the reason I use this sheet is because it provides the limit of disturbance for all the work. So if you'll see the red line that outlines the entire limit of disturbance, so to speak, around the plan, um, so if you look here, uh, this is the L O D line which matches this disturbance boundary and it goes around and then into the street where they're proposing their utilities.
So did you create that line?
Yes, I did.
So what you have now deemed the level of disturbance line, you then placed onto their drawing, is that accurate?
Which just traced over their own limit of disturbance. I have not changed it.
So, so can I, can I ask my own witness?
Can I ask, since I haven't seen the drawing and I need to understand the drawing? You highlighted their limit of disturbance line?
That is correct.
With the red, obviously.
That is correct.
Okay. The other thing that was added was the table, the large table?
Yes, well, uh, while we're on the highlighting, um, you'll see the, I guess it's purple or blue, um, highlight, I added that, that was traced on all their impervious surfaces that are not what we call regulated motor vehicle service, surface. And the red or, or pink, um, light pink would be the regulated motor vehicle services. I added that to the plan as well.
But not the actual lines?
I'm not sure what you mean, I'm sorry.
So the limit of disturbance line, it appears to me that it was a dashed line that you then, for lack of a better term, colored with a red marker. That I follow.
Correct.
The blue shading, regulated impervious surface, did you color in the existing box or shape, whatever you want to say?
Yes, I, I colored, for example, in the blue, it includes the building and any other impervious surface such as sidewalks, um, walkways, uh, that are not driven over by a vehicle.
But did you create the box or was the box or the shape already in existence like the limited of disturbance line of, limit of disturbance line?
That I added.
That you added?
I added that.
And the same thing with the regulated motor vehicle surface?
That is correct.
Okay.
Can I ask a question, too, counsel?
Absolutely.
You said you reviewed the stormwater ordinance and its definitions?
Correct.
Did you review the definition of disturbance?
Uh, I did as well. I had the, I had it up on my other, I can give you the, I can-
Yeah. Did, did you testify that, uh, milling and paving and repaving is part of disturbance?
No, milling, uh, the milling and paving is actually being done beyond the limit of that limit of disturbance shown. If you go to the one, I forgot what sheet it is, uh, but it- it shows the milling that's gonna be done for the, you know, for a larger area of road, that I know is not considered, you know, disturbance.
Okay.
So everything that I've, at least everything in my professional opinion and what's been proposed on the plan for engineering that requires excavation, everything that's the regulated motor vehicle surface, like the road and the parking lot, for example, that is, they're gonna rip up that pavement and completely replace them. Because they have to, you know, to put in the utilities, you gotta pull up the pavement and then put the, dig the trench and then, and then do all that. So all that is considered disturbance, per the definition of the ordinance.
All right, I just wanted to get the general understanding of what existed and what was altered, because I know that counsel's gonna question you regarding the drawing, so.
Understood, thank you.
And Santo, we haven't marked any of these yet.
This has not yet been marked. If you would like, we can mark it for identification purposes, since it is up on the screen. So we can mark it only for identification purposes as 01.
Okay, thank you. May I proceed? Thank you. So the, what I did is I added up all those, those are basically reflective of the definitions within the Jersey City ordinance for disturbance, regulated impervious surface and regulated motor vehicle surface. One thing to keep in mind, if you'll note, it says regulated motor vehicle surface, it doesn't say regulated impervious surface, it doesn't say anything like that, when you look at the definitions of regulated motor vehicle surfaces, it could be anything, so anything that vehicles will drive over, that potential pollutants can drop out onto the, onto the driving surface would be considered regulated motor vehicle surfaces. So if you had a dirt road, that would be considered a regulated motor vehicle surface. So even, like, as the architect had testified about the pervious pavement, while you can say that it's pervious pavement, maybe, it's still a regulated motor vehicle surface. And the reason that's important is because when you add it all up, they meet the definition of major development, triggers major development for the total disturbance, and the total of, and what you do in the ordinance, it also says, you add up the two different types of surfaces, regulated impervious and regulated motor vehicle surface. And when, so by themselves, they don't trigger the major development, but in combination, as per the ordinance, they do. My calculations were based on my measurement off of their plan, scaled off of the plan, 7,680 square feet for regulated impervious plus regulated motor vehicle surface. Now, with that said, let's say we go with the definition of onsite, which I still don't, I'm just, on the record, I don't agree, it's total disturbance, but even if you go by just the onsite, when you add up the onsite, I didn't provide that information, I scaled it off the plans, you're still dealing with just a little bit under 6,000 square feet of total regulated motor vehicle surface plus regulated impervious surface. So anyway you slice it, it's, in my professional opinion, it triggers a major development. What that means is, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And could you just, I know you've just explained the triggering on the bottom row of the chart, total regulated impervious plus regulated motor vehicle, could you explain the first row, where you, how are you coming up with 10,519 square feet of disturbed surface?
10,519, you can't, it's hard to read on the plan, it's small, but 10,519 square feet of disturbance is actually their own limit of disturbance line. Now that was placed on there for soil erosion and sediment control, it's required, but it's still disturbance, if you look at the definition of disturbance. And so I measured it off, I confirmed, I agree that the 10,519 is consider, is the measurement, and therefore we are over the 10,000 square foot limit that triggers the major development. That's really all I wanted to cover on the regulatory side, and I wanted to just, well, that's not entirely true. What I'm trying to do is, that sets the basis for some of the other questions that we have on the project.
Is this their most recent C-801 sheet? I just can't see the date on it.
Yes, it is.
Okay, so this was the one that was...
Yeah, the transfer to an image didn't, yeah, it's a little blurry. It is the, it is the, well, let me explain, it is the current plan not including the recent modification they made for the driveway, but by moving the driveway, I think they did add a little bit more green space on it, but essentially doesn't change the, necessarily the overall magnitude of triggering the major development. This is the latest signed and sealed plan of the entire set that was submitted to the, to the planning board.
I don't know that that's accurate, chairman, if this doesn't include when there was the move to the driveway, I have no idea how it impacts the calculations, I have no idea if it changes the calculations.
It doesn't change it materially at all.
Well, but you use words like it doesn't change it materially, but you're telling me that the disturbance is a exact figure of 10,519, so...
Oh no, the overall disturbance doesn't change, that's the same.
I don't...
I am allowed to rely on my professional opinion, am I not?
Of course.
You are, but I've got a drawing that isn't the most recent drawing that's been used, that's...
Then the applicant should be required to submit an entirely new set of plans, because this is the only sheet within their entire set of plans, or these are the, that's the only thing they have on the record, other than that recent modification to that one sheet. So if I can't use this, they can't use this.
Are we using it for the same purpose?
It's the official submitted civil engineering set that's before this planning board.
I understand that, but is this particular sheet being used for the same purpose, was the question? And I don't know the answer, that's all I'm suggesting.
The purpose in terms of the impervious cover?
The purpose for which the sheet was created by the applicant versus the manner in which you're using the sheet.
No, there, this was a soil erosion and sediment control plan, but it has all the elements for me to overlay all the impervious motor vehicle services and limits of disturbance, in my professional expertise and experience.
Mr. Harrington, do your experts have any objection to this? Do you have any objection to this?
It would be if Mr. Harrington has an objection.
Well, it's, I'm sorry. Again, I think it's for demonstrative purposes now, you know, for, it is what it is, I don't wanna delay this, because I'm, I think, you know, my expert, you know, can counter, you know, testify to this, and make it very clear to the board what the issues are, so I, I don't wanna go down, you know, a rabbit hole with something that, that I don't think is, to my opinion, whether it's dated, you know, the prior plan or not. We disagree with his numbers, I'll tell you, you know, right now, we disagree with his analysis, so whatever he has up there and whatever he's testifying to, we disagree to his opinion, and we're gonna, we're gonna have that.
Obviously, we'll get to that. I just wanna make sure that, you know, everybody has seen and qualified the documents that are in front of us, that's all, that's all, I'm not biasing one way or the other, obviously, I just wanna make sure everybody has seen these and has had a chance to review, that's all.
Okay, so with that said, you know, again, it's my opinion that conforming to the major development is required without question. They have 10,519 square feet of disturbance associated with this development, they have the required, they have the, they exceed the minimum impervious covers for combined for total regulated impervious and regulated motor vehicle service, vehicle, excuse me, regulated motor vehicle surface, so I think it's pretty, pretty clear that this is, this is how it's hap, this is how it's calculated, I've worked with DEP on it, and municipalities on many different applications, and the total disturbance is the total disturbance, is the total disturbance. Same thing with the impervious and the motor vehicle services associated with one complete project. The applicant, again, they don't include, they talk about pervious pavers on this project, except the, if, the details on the engineering plans have no, there is no provision for pervious pavement, pavers on the engineering plans, none. There is no, there's a detail for pavers with concrete below it, with some wheat poles and dense graded aggregate, which is highly compacted and impervial. So none of that information has been provided, the first testimony I've heard about it, well, was that the applicant's engineer has mentioned it and has stated it, it's in his report that they're doing it, but on plan, it's not there. In order to provide, if this were to conform as a major development, they would have to comply if they wanted to use that parking lot as a, as the architect called it, a permeable pavement system, that entire term is an engineered system, it's not just the pavers. When you look at the DEP, the NJDEP Best Management Practice Manual, a pervious pavement sitter, system consists of the porous asphalt, choker stone underneath it, and then a layer of at least 12 inches of gravel under the, under the road to store it. You also have to have an outfall for that, because they talk about like water that might, you know, go into the ground, but if it exceeds that, it now has to have a place to go, and so, or to convey to another location. And so that is something that needs to be considered by the board. The other thing is they're proposing these pervious pavers over a PSCNG easement, and there is a pipeline under it. And so if they're promoting and proposing a stormwater structure with regardless of whether you're just saying it's a pervious pavement system, or pervious pavement or pervious pavement system, whether minor or major, it's still a stormwater management structure, and as I understand, you're not allowed to have structures on top of the, on top of that PSCNG easement. In addition, you're now promoting water on, into the, into the easement over the, you know, you're actually taking more volume and putting it underground into the stormwater system that sits over this pipeline. So they need to provide those details, they haven't provided any other details about how they're gonna do it, and the pavement detail, the paver detail on the plan completely contradicts the testimony and the report, the stormwater report that they provided. In addition, it is absolutely important to find seasonal high groundwater. The geotechnical engineer testified before that he didn't see any groundwater, and therefore there is no seasonal high groundwater, or any water, for that matter, in this area. The actuality is, in the absence of evidence of the modeling that he discussed, you know, the iron depletions and things like that, and he's very accurate in terms of his description of that, in the absence of that, any of that evidence, in accordance with the DEP manual and rules and regulations, the BMP manual, excuse me, chapter 12, under, oops, well, we don't need to see that anymore, anyway. Under that rule, under that, that chapter of the BMP manual, you have to be at least two feet above seasonal high water, and you can only determine that seasonal high water table is by doing investigations or test pits from the months of January through April. They did it at the end of December, from a regulatory or a BMP manual standpoint, you can't do that, you can't say that's where, there's no seasonal high if you haven't seen it. The other issue is seasonal high doesn't necessarily be, is not necessarily depicted by an actual water table that, you know, a regional water table. The bedrock underneath the site can actually promote a seasonal high water table. The water goes down, as they explained, it hits the rock, it rises up to a certain elevation, it does flow laterally as well, as was stated, which was a little disconcerting about putting that stormwater and then sending it over to the slope, but, you know, that'll, I'll just, I'll talk about that in a little bit. So that's one of the big issues associated with this stormwater system, they don't know where seasonal high groundwater is, and they don't have any details on the stormwater management system, and how they're gonna manage excess stormwater going off the site. I know in the engineer's report, he stated, or it was stated in the engineering letter today that was submitted, that they need to connect the drainage from the pavers to the stormwater system, I don't, I wasn't sure if that meant an inlet or a, under, from, you know, the, the gravel system that's supposed to be under the site, I don't know.
If this project is considered a major development under our stormwater control ordinance, what would have been required to comply with the ordinance?
You would go down the ordinance, and you would have to follow basically the rest of the, what's been, the model ordinance from the DEP. You have to look at peak flow, so the two 10 and 100 year storm events, you have to look at groundwater recharge, the architect stated that he agreed that there was gravel on the site and on the parking lot as well, so that there is some kind of recharge going on here, so they'd have to work on, on engineering the system to make up for that depleted recharge, and they'd also have to do water quality treatment on the site as well, and that could include recharge, it could be a recharge system, but if you're gonna go to groundwater, well, pervious pavement actually is its own water quality treatment, but you have to prove that you can actually recharge that groundwater to the subsurface. So they'd have to go in and do more testing, more excavations, and to prove that they could get that recharge on the site. Again, it's a structure on top, also part of it is on top of the PSCNG easement, and so that would be concerning to me. Trying to go to some of the other, sorry, my notes here, so that was really it on the compliance with the major versus minor development, I apologize it took this long to get to that point, but here we are. So the next thing that I wanted to talk about is some other things missing from the application is, under the PPOD ordinance, they talk about description, physical description of the site, which shall include a technical summary of the site characteristics such as soils, load bearing capacity, erosion potential, depth to bedrocks, et cetera. So so far only, you know, the soil load, the soil, the load bearing capacity and depth to bedrock has been provided, there isn't any discussion about erodability of soils. I can expect that the response to that would be, well, we are complying with the Soil Conservation District in terms of impacts, but that's not discussing soil erodability associated with it. So the other thing is the applicant's engineer had provided that cut fill, if, just to be clear, it's not an exact cut fill, it's ranges. So when all those different colors are two, you know, two feet, they're basically ranges of two feet. He said it's unfair to ask him how much volume would be excavated, I think you, I think it would be fair to do that, engineers have the ability to calculate estimated volumes that would need to be excavated, I don't know, is it 50 yards, is it 100 yards, is it 1,000 yards, cubic yards of material that's gonna have to be excavated? Where's it gonna go? How many trucks have to drive through the neighborhood to do that? I haven't calculated that, but that's not my position on this application, but I think the applicant should provide that information. Triaxle dump trucks hold 15 cubic yards, so if it's, I don't know, if you could throw out a number there, I'm not gonna, you know, on the record, I'm not gonna throw out an exact number, because I haven't calculated it, but yes, sir.
So we shouldn't give a number, we shouldn't guess at a number?
I'm not gonna guess at a number, I think the applicant should provide that number.
Okay.
Thank you. And they can caveat it by saying, well, you know, there's, things could change, you know, material may not be adequate, they might have to, they may need it for other areas of the site, they, you know, they can caveat that, but I have been asked and provided a number of times and seen applications that do provide the cut fill and the exact volume that they expect to be removed from the site. They do talk about, you know, in the PPOD, the extent and phasing of construction, it is a relatively small site, I wouldn't expect that there would be a significant amount of phasing, but they do have a stockpile there, is that stockpile gonna be adequate to hold all of the excavation material, how are they gonna, how are they gonna export it, how often? I think that's information... I think that's information that, um, is requested, that is, uh, uh, should be provided to the planning board because as in the PPOD ordinance with the information that you're getting, it does provide, it, it helps the planning board understand not just compliance with the specific items in the ordinance, but your job is also to, uh, and I don't want to presume your job, so I'm just, you know, as I understand, if you look at the ordinance, I, I realized I said that and I should have, so I apologize. Um, but the issue is, um, you're also looking at public safety. And so, making sure that this application, uh, doesn't provide any impact to the, to the neighborhood and things like that. And I think the truck, uh, traffic and excavation of that material is something definitely to be considered. Uh, okay, so, moving to the geotechnical, um, investigation. Um, I read the G, the JZN report. Um, I don't have any necess- I don't have a, um, I don't have a difference of opinion of whether or not this, the rock can vertically hold this structure in place. That's not, that's not what it says. I do have some concerns about some of the, the modeling and some of the, uh, the, the way it was modeled. Uh, he said he didn't provide any, um, input of groundwater because he said there is no groundwater. Um, but he also, at the same time, another, later on in his testimony tonight said, well, if the water does go down, it's going to hit the bedrock and go sideways and went, you know, toward the slope and then go down the slope and disappear into nothing. Well, the reality is, water is a great lubricator, uh, uh, and it provides, if there's an interface between either bedrock fractures or soil, and more importantly, the soil, the overburden material and the bedrock, that could create what's called a slip plane, which is where things would fail. The model that he generated generally looks, it looked, basically assumed a mass of bedrock. So, there wasn't really a lot of information on the fractures and how this thing might, you know, what could possibly, there were no surfaces provided. Um, more importantly to me, there wasn't, I, I didn't see any information. He had these lines that separated the bedrock from the overburden material. Um, I don't disagree with them. You open up an excavation, you put in, you know, you, you take the material away, but we also didn't, he didn't mention, you're putting the building back and you're putting all that load back on the soils. You're putting an eight-story structure, an 80-foot five, 85-foot-high structure back on the site. That is going to impart more load. Um, he said he's not providing, um, uh, uh, because it's going below the overburden material and sitting on bedrock, that it's not going to have an effect on the overburden. Well, if you notice in that one, uh, on that one cross-section he provided, there was a little wedge of overburden on the bedrock at the slope. Two things. Um, that width, I believe, is about 35 feet. The bu- the building, I, I'm just, I think it's around 35 feet of width. Um, and it's now going to cut off that slope and that overburden, and so, could that potentially now have the propensity to slide? If it, if it, um, because now it's not, soil is, you know, it's, it can pull apart, but now there's nothing there, there's a surface that could potentially slip and fail. Um, the other issue associated with that is-
If we can-
Yes.
Just give me one second. Can you refer to a, a, a drawing number or something so we can follow along with you?
It's in the, yes, it's in the geotechnical engineering report, which I will. Ah, here it is. Uh, when I printed it, it's, um, it's, well, if you recall, it was in the geotechnical report, I don't know what page it was on in the geotechnical report, but they provided, the building is over here, if you can imagine, um, and this is that soil overburden that I was talking about, that wedge of soil. Um, yeah, that's also in the, at the end of his report, uh, excuse me, sorry. At the end of the report, he also shows, uh, his output, this is the output from his, his model.
I don't know how good your glasses are. Mine aren't that good.
Yeah, the output from the model does show that it's, it's, um, uh, that he does go below the overburden, but it still has a slip plane there. Yes.
So, the report was submitted. Can we not show it on the screen?
I don't have a digital copy of it.
I do. I just, I want to know the page that we're on, that's all. I, I can follow along with the page.
I didn't, I didn't download, I just, I'm sorry. I downloaded our exhibits, but not the applicant's exhibits, but, um, I don't know if you have a package or anything you received.
I do, but I don't know where to look. Uh, you know, this-
We do, so if you tell us the page number in the report-
If you can pull up the, if you can pull up the report.
It's 46 pages long now. I'd like something specific.
Oh, it's page 32, probably of the PDF.
Okay.
So, it's not, it doesn't have a page number, but-
That's fine. That works. Okay, so just so we're on the-
Matt's going to pull it up for everybody.
Who's better than Matt?
Is that not what you were doing, Matt?
Yeah, thank you.
This is the sheet analysis cross-section.
Figure four, page two of two. Possible? I'm sorry. The sheet analysis? What do you mean? Oh, this is, it, it just says cross-section A. It's titled, and it's on sheet, I guess it's 32 of the PDF.
It's, it's a drawing? Are you looking at a drawing?
Yeah, it's a cross-sectional drawing, so it's-
Okay, so the problem is you can't see the title block because of the size of yours, but it's drawing-
It's, uh, analysis cross-section is what it's called.
Okay.
I think we're looking at the same thing.
I think so.
That's all. Thank you. That's it right there. Ah, thank you very much. That's it right there.
Thank you.
So, what I was pointing at was the concern is this wedge of soil here. Now, he took basically the existing conditions of the site and then they put the building in. If you look at the, um, the cut fill analysis sheet, they're actually going to be putting, placing some fill over there as well. And so, um, I didn't see that analyzed for putting that filler, putting up to, I think, a few feet of fill, um, in that location. And so, what impact does that have on the sides, on the slope, um, stability as well? You look at the, um, uh, the cross-section that they, uh, developed here, you'll notice that he assumes his bedrock outcrop, uh, the surface, uh, uh, was from, uh, where is Extent of exposed rock per survey. Um, so, I'm not sure that the applicant's geotechnical engineer actually went down and saw the bedrock, um, or the ex, the, the exposed bedrock in that location, um, but nonetheless, it looks like they just used that. And then they interpolated, by the way, that slope is interpolated up to the top where their first boring was, or by the slope, or their boring B3, I guess is what it's called here. And this boring here, um, I agree with. He found some, he found top of rock and that's where it is. Down here, it's per the survey. Uh, is this actually still accurate? I, I remember in the, uh, the zoning board testimony, uh, I don't know if, is that, they talked about, well, they, they didn't know, they didn't really find it, so they just picked a location. Um, and so, is there really the outcrop there? Is this steeper? Is that cliff face, which is, you know, the contention is that, the definition in the zoning ordinance is that it's an exposed cliff face? That's part of the, I may get quieted down here, but-
Yeah.
But regardless-
We're not going to talk about cliff faces.
Well, all right, what I'm going to say is though, that slope is prob- that bedrock slope could very well precipitate off, uh, quit- more quickly, um, than what is shown on that, and that building could potentially be closer. This area was, um, the part of that elevated rail that came up, so there was a lot of fill and retaining walls and, so the area was highly modified. So, I'm not making the argument about whether there's a cliff face or not tonight, so I'm not doing that. What I'm saying is though, we have no idea where that potential, if there is a buried cliff face somewhere, um, or a, a more, excuse me, instead of saying a cliff face, a more precipitous drop off of bedrock. I can tell you, I've been on that slope, I've walked around, I have not been on the site, but I've walked, uh, down the side of, um, uh, the, the building to the north, um, and it's a pretty darn steep, uh, steep embankment there. It's, you, you could get killed walking down that if you walk any further, so, um, so that, that is another concern, that this building could be closer to the, um, to a potential, um, impact associated with having a cliff face. The applicant's geotechnical engineer talked about fractured rock. Um, if you can only look to last December, uh, where, uh, up in North Bergen where a section of the, the Palisades failed and, uh, it was due to rainfall, like rain got in the ground. Um, so, if you want to, you know, talking about, obviously, I'm trying to make the equivalency between that and putting, uh, stormwater into the ground and then promoting, uh, water running over the surfaces and through the fissures in this rock. Um, you can't say that there'll never be a landslide, uh, there are, there have been documented landslides here, so it is really best to be on the side of, of conservative in terms of, of, uh, ensuring public safety.
So, there've been documented landslides on this property?
No, no, in the area, in the area. They're mapped by DEP. No, I did not say that, sorry. Um, okay. And I believe I'm almost done. Do you have any more questions for me?
Based on your review and your analysis of the application, do you have a conclusion?
Yeah, based on my review, the application must qualify, does qualify, um, without question as a major development. It must follow the, uh, in, you know, the more detailed requirements that a major development application would require. It will help, uh, the city, um, meet, you know, meet it, the water quality, uh, and, MS4, or not MS4, the, the CSO requirements that the ordinance was developed for to protect that CSO and reduce stormwater from going to those locations. Um, and while they do provide a green roof, by the way, a green roof is not, um, an accepted BMP right now for DEP. Um, uh, you'd have to, it's an alternative, you'd have to prove, I'm not saying it doesn't reduce peak flows, but that's, it's not a, an approved, uh, means. Uh, pervious pavement systems are approved, but they have to be designed in a specific manner, uh, in accordance with the New Jersey BEP, BMP manual. Um, I'm also concerned about some of the modeling associated with this and whether the overburden, uh, a landslide could be triggered by that overburden, um, as well and, um, and as well as the, um, method of excavation and number of trucks and how that's going to impact the neighborhood. So, thank you.
Anything else? For this witness, obviously.
Yeah, I would like to move O1 into evidence, was marked for identification.
It is. I have no objection for the limited purposes of, it's, it's an overlay on my experts-
Counsel, if you could, right into the microphone.
I have no objection for the limited purposes in that it's an overlay of my experts' plan with their own calculations and nothing more than that.
But as to accuracy, you remain objecting to it, Mr. Harrington?
Well, th- those are his numbers.
Can't you let him cross-examine the-
You're trying to move it into evidence. He hasn't asked him a question yet, Ms. Hajiyanis.
I, I, okay.
So, do you want to wait to try to move it into evidence until Mr. Harrington cross-examines him? That's a great idea, that's what we're going to do.
Well, I'd rather have Mr. Harrington cross-examine him than have you cross-examine him.
I'll consider that a compliment.
So, but we've already, we've already heard testimony on the exhibit. We have to answer it.
That's right.
We have to answer it.
Yes, that's, that's right.
Yeah, I, it is what it is. I, I have no objection to, to having this-
That's opinion, but that-
There you go. Mr. Harrington wants it in evidence, so great. It's moved into evidence, O1. It's in evidence and accepted by the board for its value.
Okay, Mr. Harrington, do you want to cross-examine?
Yes, I just have a few questions, uh, Mr. Gall. I guess to start off, you, you referenced a North Bergen, uh, landslide. Do you know what kind of rock formation that was?
Uh, it was part of the Palisades, the, the basalt.
Are you sure it was in sandstone?
I, I hadn't seen that details in the report.
Okay. Um, and let me, uh, how many developments have you worked on in Jersey City?
Uh, only the, currently the largest one in Liberty State Park.
Okay, we don't have any Palisade, uh, cliff issues over at Liberty State Park, correct?
No.
Okay. And, uh, so your testimony on the interpretation of the, well, I guess your opinion on the Jersey City stormwater ordinance and the PPOD are based exclusively on your interpretation of the ordinance, correct?
Well, the plain language of the ordinance, it's pretty clear. And my, actually, the, the language in the ordinance, while the numbers have been reduced in terms of, uh, let, like, uh, area of disturbance and the impervious and motorized surfaces, um, and the addition of like a, a provision for minor, uh, development, um, everything else is the same. I'd have worked on numbers, dozens of those types of projects.
Okay, but it's based upon just your interpretation and we understand you haven't done any other projects in Jersey City.
Correct. The plain language of the ordinance that has been used and is, was basically taken right from DEP's own model ordinance, which I've worked on before.
Okay. And you, you had a lot of comments on, uh, you know, the GeoTech report, um, and I, so I want to ask you, have you done, well, I, I think the answer is, is, is obvious, but you haven't done any independent analysis or report with regard to that report or, or the property, correct?
Well, I couldn't do any independent analysis or report. I don't have any of the, 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 the input data or the data or the output information that the applicant provided. He basically, in the appendices, just provided, you know, pretty pictures.
But you didn't, you, you had that report, you, you didn't do any, any rebuttal report, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
I have no further questions for, for Mr. Gall, but I would like to bring up, um, my civil engineer to, to rebut, uh, the testimony regarding O1. I think it would be appropriate now, while it's still fresh in everybody's head.
So, Chairman, my only concern is Ms. Hajiyanis has other witnesses. I don't know, and I don't want to get into, uh, back and forth, so obviously, Ms. Hajiyanis just had her expert qualify and provide their testimony. It is only fair that, uh, Mr. Harrington be, provide the opportunity for a rebuttal witness, he is the applicant. But then Ms. Hajiyanis is going to come back with her next witness. Uh, it has to be in a different field or discipline. Do you have any further experts, or this is your only expert witness, Ms. Hajiyanis?
We don't have any more experts, we just have fact witnesses who should be pretty quick, so e- either way is fine with me.
Okay.
Mr. Harrington, let's bring up your witness then.
I can be excused?
Okay.
Don't leave the building, though.
No.
But thank you. And before we start, Mike, if you need a break, just yell. Is that okay, Ca- uh, counsel?
Okay.
Okay.
So, sir, I'm going to remind you that you remain under oath. I just asked for purposes of the record, you repeat your name.
Brian Liebeskind, L.I.E.B.E.S.K.I.N.D.
Okay, uh, Brian, you were here for the testimony of Mr. Gall, correct?
I was.
And, uh, you had a chance to, uh, review, uh, what was marked as- And, uh, you had a chance to, uh, review, uh, what was marked as, uh, Exhibit O one?
I did.
Okay. And, uh, you testified on, in November, on November 28th, that this is a minor, uh, development per the stormwater ordinance. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And, and has, you know, the testimony of Mr. Gall or his interpretation changed your mind at all?
It has not.
Okay. And I, I think you said it, you know, back in November, but is your interpretation of this ordinance based upon your experience with projects that you've worked on in Jersey City and working with the MUA?
It is.
Okay. And if, um, let me ask you, if, if this were, uh, or who would, who would tell you, uh, that this is not a minor and a major, uh, develop, and then, and instead it's a major development?
The city professionals, um, mostly the, uh, JCMUA.
And, and part of the process of getting permitting is to go through the JCO MUA, uh, for, for the permitting wi- with their, their, uh, um, their office, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And what, what would happen if, if, if they determine that this is a major and not a minor after their further review?
Uh, so the, the main difference, um, is that it would introduce a, um, underground detention system, um, below the building. Uh, so coupled with the, the green roof, um, on top of the building, it would take that clean runoff and detain it on the ground and then pipe it, um, to the, um, combined sewer, uh, in, in the street.
Right. And, and could that be done at this, uh, property?
It could.
Okay. And if there was a determination, uh, by the planning board that it was minor or, or major, would that, uh, bind the JCO MUA?
No.
Okay. So, so in, in essence, the, the ultimate determination is whether it's a minor or a major development will be made by, by the, the JCO MUA, notwithstanding your opinion or, or Mr. Gall's opinion, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's, that's all I have.
Ms. Hagiyanis, do you want to cross-examine?
Yes, I do. Thank, thank you. I have a couple of follow-up questions. Um, so was the stormwater management plan that was part of your report, was it submitted to the JCMUA?
Yes, all, all of the, the documents, um, the signed sealed engineering drawings and report were provided to the city and, and the professionals.
And did you receive any written findings from the JCMUA?
We have not, never received a, a, uh, review memo. Uh, I've stated for the record that we would comply with, um, with any comments that we get from them.
Okay. And I, um, actually like to, um, ask you if you're familiar with this part of the stormwater control ordinance, which I'm going to read into the record. Um, it's three forty-seven, section three forty-seven dash seventy-four, um, point one, C two, uh, it says, "No major or minor development shall be deemed in compliance with this ordinance unless a legally authorized body or official of the city of Jersey City has issued re-written findings based on a technical review by a legally authorized and qualified employee, agent, or official of the city of Jersey City that such development complies with the requirements of this ordinance." Are, are you familiar with that language in the ordinance?
I am.
And are you aware that stormwater, uh, compliance is considered a checklist item on the, on the application checklist?
Yes.
Okay. And so, so nobody's issued written findings?
We have an, an engineering memo from Li Chuan Wang that covers the site improvements, um, grading, um, and stormwater. Typically, the, uh, JCMUA comment letter, um, goes into more depth on the, what they would like to see for connections in the street. Um, I will note that there are some discrepancies between the, uh, LDO, um, that you cited and the, the rules and procedures, um, for JCMUA. The plans that submitted comply with the ordinance. Um, however, we expect, um, you have certain changes, um, as part of the, the connection with the MUA, including, um, removing, um, any recharge as part of the, the parking lot, which is, um, from our, our vast experience in Jersey City, the, the JCMUA is adamantly opposed to any kind of, um, infiltration to the ground. So it is, is written into the, um, the stormwater control ordinance. We, we include it for the project. Um, you know, we, we note, uh, that it satisfies the, the volume requirement as a minor development. Um, however, again, in our experience, we expect that the JCMUA will request that it be, um, removed as, as part of the design.
Okay, so the, so the design may change, you're saying?
We are, we are complying with the, with the ordinance that, that is written. I, I'm, another night, we can get into, uh, ironing out some of the language in the, the ordinance. Um, I, I will tell you that, you know, that the JCMUA has, um, different, um, en- engineering opinions on, uh, what's required. And so we are complying with the rules. Um, but I would, the, um, they, they will determine, um, you know, whether this is a minor development or major development. Again, in my experience, um, this meets the, the criteria for minor development and, uh, the, you know, the comments that we would get from them, um, will be, will be limited in nature.
So, so you're saying that the JCMUA doesn't, that they're not trying to force applicants to comply with this ordinance the way it's written?
Uh, to go back to, uh, comments that, uh, Mr. Gall made, there are, uh, departures from the stormwater control ordinance that you read and what the state requirements are. Um, Jersey, the vast majority of Jersey City is exempt from any requirements for s- uh, groundwater recharge because it isn't the, uh, metropolitan planning region. Uh, that, um, is sort of the, the view of the JCMUA as well, that, um, for reasons cited by your professional, that, uh, introducing water into the ground is unwise in, in most areas of the city.
Right. So, so you had said there's a possibility a detention system could be constructed underneath the building?
The, the hypothetical is that in the unlikely event that, uh, the JCMUA says, "No, you, I, we do not agree. This is not a, a minor development," the really only impact to the, uh, project would be that, uh, introducing a, uh, detention basin under the, the building.
Okay, so we don't know yet whether, um, the JCMUA considers this to be a minor or a major development under the stormwater control ordinance?
We, we cannot say definitively, um, but again, our, our vast experience in Jersey City and projects of this size, that this qualifies as a minor development.
If, if we received the written findings that are required under our stormwater control ordinance, would we then know whether the JCMUA considers this to be a minor or a major development?
Uh, again, I, I think this is really just a different, difference of interpretation of that one, uh, you know, section of, uh, the code for regulated impervious coverage. Uh, I have my interpretation that the building itself does not qualify, that the, the work in the public right of way does not, um, count towards that, uh, that threshold. Your professional has a, a difference of opinion. You, we can, um, you know, what, what counsel said is that if, uh, it, it, JCMUA, uh, disagrees with us, then we will simply, you know, revise the design to incorporate a, uh, an underground detention.
Okay. And then would that alter, I mean, would, would you then have to excavate more bedrock at, at, at that point if you were building an underwater, an, an underground detention basin?
Uh, potentially.
Okay, so that would alter the cut and fill plan that was submitted to this board?
Uh, again, it, if that unlikely event, uh, played out.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, I have nothing further, uh, Brian. Okay, uh, we're gonna take a break for Mike, everybody. He's been typing away for a long time now. We appreciate you, Mike. All right, um, it could be...
Can, can I ask a question?
Is, are you represented by Ms. Hagiyanis? Are you a member of RNA?
Um, I am a member of RNA, but I also live down the block and I have standing and I'm a taxpayer.
Sure, obviously. Um, no, actually, you could give your question, question to Ms. Hagiyanis. She's speaking on behalf of RNA. And we're gonna take that break, though.
Okay.
But you can come back with a question, all right?
Lateness of the hour and the stopping at ten o'clock, so...
Good evening, everybody. Uh, the petitioner consents to this case being carried to the next planning board meeting.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
Thank you, sir.
So we're gonna carry that to a date certain?
We don't need a motion, right?
No.
No, we don't need a motion. Uh, date certain, February sixth.
Mr. Acidorian and Mr. Polino, this is the Liberty Harbor North Redevelopment Plan Review and Discussion of the Amendment. Uh, obviously, you just heard my little speech. Mr. Acidorian, your appearance, please.
Good evening. Gregory Acidorian from the Dakota's Law Firm on behalf of Liberty Harbor North Partners LLC.
Mr. Polino.
Dean Paulino of Genova Burns on behalf of LHN Owners Urban Renewal and LHN Two. Moment, Earl, too.
And gentlemen, you both consent to the matter being carried to the February sixth date?
Yes.
Yes, sure.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Case P two-three dash zero-nine-nine, seventeen dash twenty-three, Perrine. Mr. Lean.
Good evening, Commissioners. Tom Lean of Connell Foley here on behalf of the applicant. Uh, we also consent to, uh, carrying the application with preservation of notice until February sixth.
Thank you, Ms. Lean.
Thank you.
Case P two-three dash zero-seven-five, three nineteen to three twenty-one, Fourth Street, Mr. Higgins.
Yes, uh, good evening.
Good evening.
The applicant consents to carrying this. Uh, we just request preservation of notice.
Thank you, counsel.
Very good. February sixth, counsel. I've got a paper copy.
It was items, it was item seventeen, twenty-three dash thirty-nine.
Ah, P twenty-three dash thirty-nine, seven forty-six, Grand Street.
Good evening. Kelly Carey from Patchman Stone, Walter Hayden for the applicant. We agree to adjourn to the February sixth date. That's acceptable?
Absolutely. And that's with preservation of notice.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, counsel.
He's gonna hold.
The only matter...
Uh, twenty-three didn't carry, right? Do we still have Mr. Lean? Did he run out the door?
No, Mr. O'Connell.
Now twenty-three.
Uh, Mr. Lean did run out the door. You ready to go final?
Not this guy.
I don't know. We, we didn't get to, we didn't talk about twenty-three. That wasn't carried. Let me, uh, let me go see if he's in here. Okay, if we could.
Which one is, uh, which one is Mr. O'Connell?
Mad De Silva.
Yeah, I received communication from Veronica Chimmel, um, several days ago mentioning, uh, their intent to carry two thirty-nine, two fifty-nine, Cole Street.
Oh, okay.
Oh, great.
Okay, so case P two-zero-two-three dash zero-zero-seven-four, uh, Site Plan Amendment for two thirty-nine to two fifty-nine Cole Street is carried to a date certain, February sixth with preservation of notice.
And Mr. O'Connell, you're gonna try to stick around a little bit to see if we can get to you at three nineteen, Fifth Street.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Ms. Hagiyanis, floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Liebeskin, we just had a couple of more questions for you. Thank you. Um, so, um, do you know when our stormwater control, or when Jersey City Stormwater Control Ordinance was adopted?
The, you're talking about the last revised date?
Uh, initially, I would say.
Uh, there's a version from like twenty-twenty, around that era, um, which is what, you know, most of our applications are following.
Okay, and when was the last revised date?
No, I'm saying that's, uh, it was last revised, like, you know, about, yeah, three, four years ago.
Okay, all righty. And then, and when you prepared the engineer's report on this application, when did you first prepare it?
I mean, there's a, a date on the, the report, so...
Is it, is it July twenty-twenty-two?
Yes.
Okay. So, so you prepared this report after Jersey City Stormwater Control Ordinance was adopted?
Correct. It, it reflects the, um, the current ordinance.
Okay. And did your report contain any analysis of compliance with the Stormwater Control Ordinance?
Yes, it, it, uh, describes, uh, how we've classified it. That it is not subject to NJDEP, um, definitions for major development. Um, it's not, qualifies as a major development for the Jersey City Stormwater Control Ordinance. However, it, um, did meet the, um, five thousand square foot threshold to be considered a minor development. And then walks through the calculations for recharge based on the city's requirement.
Okay, but, um, did you break out site disturbance, um, into the, the categories that we, our expert discussed, impervious coverage, motor vehicle coverage, total, total disturbance?
The, the area that was used to compute the volume of storage is based on the Stormwater Control Ordinance that the city has. Um, and it's strictly, um, you know, the, that regulated area. The total site disturbance is a separate matter. I've got to, I provide testimony explaining why I feel that it's, um, appropriate to call as a minor development.
Okay. Okay, I don't, I don't have anything further for you.
Mr. Harrington, anything?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to call our, our, um, fact witness, Kern Weissman.
Sure.
Okay.
Oh, wait.
Yeah.
I do. Sure, it's K.E.R.N., last name Weissman, W.E.I.S.S.M.A.N.
Just for the board's edification, uh, Mr. Weissman is testifying as a fact witness. He's not, we're not qualifying you as an expert tonight.
Definitely not.
Always good to see you, though.
Talking about computers, maybe.
Um, Mr. Weissman did have a, he had a couple of exhibits. I showed them to Mr. Harrington on the break. They were also emailed to, uh, the review planner before the last hearing, November twenty-eighth. Um, and, no, Chuck, Chuck, did you want to confirm, Mr. Harrington, did you want to confirm that you don't have a problem with these?
I reviewed them and I'm, I'm okay with, with, uh, with them.
So we have, we have paper copies. Um, I can also pull them up on the screen if the board, uh, doesn't...
Why don't we talk about what they are first before we see them?
Sure. Um, so the first exhibit is basically like a slideshow that just captures the observations of the Riverview Neighborhood Association Development Committee as they've reviewed the plans, um, you know, and the various iterations of the plans of, you know, over the past year or so.
But obviously, you know what plan is in front of this board tonight?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay. So we're not, we're not rehashing old plans or...
This is strictly...
No, 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 not at all. And then...
I just, I don't want to muddy the board's view with any, you know, plan from three years ago, five years ago?
No, 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 it's, it's, believe me, it's quick. Those are like a few quick...
I just, I have to ask these questions before we see anything.
I understand. Yes, it's a few quick observations. And then, um, this, and the, this, it's a, kind of a little slideshow. And then the second one is, uh, it's a, it's a map showing, an old historic map showing Ogden and, um, some photographs of the back, one of the backyards on Ogden that experienced a landslide and, and, um, Mr., I think, Mr. Harrington's already... and, um, some photographs of the back, one of the backyards on Ogden that experienced a landslide and, and, um, Mr., I think, Mr. Harrington's already even heard... Heard exactly what Kern's going to say at another hearings.
But just, just so we're not, we're, we're obviously not re-litigating...
That's right.
What happened at the zoning board already. That's not this board's purview. We're not allowed to do that.
No, we are, we are not. It's, it's just a pla, it's a plan review and this sort of discussion of this landslide as it, as it pertains to the safety of construction on, uh, close, you know, within the Palisade Protection Overlay District.
Okay, and obviously, Mr. Weisman, any pictures if you could identify the address they were taken from, their proximity to the site?
Yeah, and I personally took them.
Okay, everything is helpful.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, sorry, Matt, but I'm going to plug my computer in again.
Let's let Matt do it.
Yeah. It doesn't like me. It doesn't want to show my, my exhibits.
Yeah, I'll be brief.
No problem. Well, I start now, right? Did you plug in the HDMI cable?
Yeah, no problem.
The system is not reading your computer as being logged in?
We're in the middle of something. It's a hard stop.
Excuse me, the HDMI isn't being read. Is it plugged in?
Nope, it is not. Good call.
We now see what you are sharing.
Okay, yep.
And, um, Kern, before you start, I, I do need to, Ms. Hagiannis, Mr. Harrington, I do need to advise everyone in the room. We don't open new applications after 10 o'clock. We're putting a hard stop at 10:30 tonight.
Okay.
There's...
What time is it now?
It's...
It's 10:00.
It's 9:48.
Okay, okay.
So, i-if we're in the middle of public comment, 10:30 hits. I apologize. We need to move on. We have other items at the end, you know, in-house items that need to get done before close of business tonight.
Understood.
So it's, I can't believe I'm saying this, but we're at a hard stop on this one at 10:30.
Okay, so...
And it's fascinating. I love it. I love it.
All right, I'll, I'll move through. Okay, so, so I won't spend a lot of time on this. This is just shows all the different plans that were submitted at the, the committee. So the Riverview Neighborhood Association has, um, you know, Development Committee. I'm the chair of that committee. We have a group, you know, that, that is on that committee that's been reviewing these plans from the beginning, um, just showing that, you know, it's, there's been a lot of revisions. I'm going to focus on the current, what's before you in your current set. So that's what I'm going to focus on these slides. So, uh, failures to address, uh, infrastructure, site plan review comments. Going to go through those real quick. So the dangerous crosswalk, obviously, there was a new thing loaded today that took away this comment. But the point is, that crosswalk in, you know, the original, uh, request for that to be moved 30 feet away for safety, we have seen that on other projects. I have probably reviewed with the committee probably over 100 different projects in the neighborhood. I have seen that as a very common thing. They also don't like, um, things near stop signs. Stop signs, pedestrian traffic, keep it away from the driveways. Makes sense. Um, this doesn't appreciably change that. This is only four, four feet away, and they're actually combining it with another driveway. So I would say still, still dangerous. I'm not going to cover this, don't worry about it. It's just showing that there's two different, uh, plans. There's one in a architectural diagram, but the actual engineering plan set still has the old design. Failure to address inadequate milling, paving, the limits of the, so this is direct comment from, um, from the engineering. Says the, uh, the milling paving should be extended 20 feet southwest of the sewer. Man will be connected to. If you look on the right, the revised set, uh, shows, shows that not happening yet. So that hasn't been addressed. Uh, the silt fence location, um, they also wanted that extended to the, or, you know, relocated actually along the property line, uh, and the latest set of plans that was not addressed. Traffic, traffic study. Everyone loves traffic, right? Um, the, uh, the study actually contradicts itself. It basically said on page four, which I highlighted, uh, it basically says that the, uh, there's 12, you know, indicates both 12 units and 14 units in different places. And it appears that the, uh, you know, the, the actual traffic, uh, analysis in terms of, uh, trip generation was based on 12 units. And, and this is where I'm talking about that. So, um, you're, you know, it does, it does, it just does matter. Accuracy matters, right? We want to be, we want to make sure we're not having errors and omissions in our, in our, in the plans that are submitted by applicants. So basically, not correcting that. Not sure why that wasn't corrected. Um, it was pointed out, this was submitted again, you know, uh, with the first hearing that we did, uh, a month ago. So, you know, it's based on 12 units, not 14, highlighting that. Uh, just a historic image, you know, what it used to look like there just speaks to some of the disturbance that happened on that site.
If we could... If we could, can we get an exact location on that picture?
Oh, sure.
Within reason, obviously.
Oh, absolutely. So, so this is actually leading right up to the 152 site? Yeah, yeah. No, I appreciate you saying that, actually. So what happened was there was the, the rail, the elevated on the left that you're saying? And then there was a binocular that would carry up horses and buggies and stuff like that. And this actually leads right into that site. So when we talk about some disturbance on the site and why, you know, especially potentially, you know, kind of issues there or something, it's, it's because the site's been disturbed. So we want, the Palisade Protection Overlay, which RNA was, uh, uh, one of the driving forces behind it, was trying to protect the entire Palisade, especially sites that have been, you know, disturbed, you know, from any further, uh, damage or issue.
So a-as I'm looking at that, the, the structure that the tracks lead up to?
Yeah.
That's on the east side of Ogden or the west side of Ogden?
That, that's on the, uh, that's on the west side of Ogden.
Okay, so that's the corner of wood.
Supremo building, you know, Supremo. So that's where it would go in and then it would go basically.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, this was just some good historical context. I thought it was interesting. Not going, uh, that, that is just a, that was a photo of the, um, there's a new utility pole. That's right where the, the driveway entrance is proposed.
And, and for, obviously, I know where that is. The rest of the board, can you just describe the location for everybody?
Yeah, absolutely. So, so that, that's where Ferry Street, uh, comes in, and it basically lands right there. So that's if you can see it.
Wood Street.
Ferry and Ogden.
No, that's Wood right there.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Yeah, Wood, Wood and, and Ogden. So what happens is you, you basically have, uh, that crosswalk that was what was represented on the plan. This is right south of that. So this, so that pole is basically right where the, uh, plan would, I did see a comment in the, in, you know, that that was, that have to be relocated. Okay, uh, so we can pull up the other one?
Ms. Hagiannis, we're going to mark the slides as O2. I have it as 11 slides.
Okay, thank you.
You said that that had been submitted prior to...
Prior to November 28th.
And we will need a, uh, digital copy of O1 as well.
And Matt, um, in the event we don't reach a decision tonight and we end up carrying this, can we get all these exhibits up on the portal?
I will request them and try to get them up.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm a little technical there. Yeah, here, just make that full size. There, perfect. Sorry, guys. Um, if you can see, you're good?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, so this is a historical, um, it was a report, uh, called Washington Village. Uh, this was pulled, um, in, in basically Historical Society, Hudson, Hudson City Historical Society. Uh, they basically showed these maps, historical maps. Oh, I'm sorry. My, my apologies. So this, this is, uh, they, they do some historical maps. This is one of their studies that they did about the history of the neighborhood, Hudson City. So all I'm doing here is just showing you that mountain road used to go all the way through behind Ogden. So if, uh, obviously, people of heights kind of know this, but what happened was mountain road, as I've highlighted, used to go all the way, um, down, and you used to actually be able to drive all the way through and then connect to the mountain road to go down. So that's, that's how that was historically. It was always designed like that. Right, so obviously right on that, you know, edge of the cliff there.
And what are those cross streets?
I'm sorry, I'm going to...
Uh, so that's, that's Griffith.
Okay.
Yep, and then that goes down to Franklin.
Okay.
Let's just, uh, mark this as O3. It's a four, is this, what, how many pages is this?
I have four.
154? What, what am I looking at here?
I have, I have four pages.
Oh, this is a screenshot of something. Okay.
Four pages.
Griffith is, is, as I'm looking at it, it's on the right, and then Franklin's on the left.
Franklin's on the left.
Yeah, yeah, as I'm looking at it, yeah.
So, Mr. Weisman, where did this map come from? And we have a...
So, so I...
Record date?
So I included the, uh, the, the link to it in the URL. So it was the Washington Village, uh, uh, you know, report, and that was basically by the Hudson, Hudson City Historical Society. And this was published on the internet in 2014.
And do you have any idea when this... ...map is from? Any... 1910, 1920, 1860, any idea?
So, so, I, I mean, no, I don't, I don't know the exact date of this, this map, but I, I, I know that road was driven even in the 80s. People used to drive down that road.
Nineties, I would think. That went into the 90s, didn't it?
Uh, yeah, I'm not sure of the exact date. It was, it was, it was definitely, I, I know people on Ogden used to drive down that in the 80s. But yeah, I'm sorry, I can't give you the exact date of what this, the map's from. Are we good to move on, or?
Yes. Sure, go ahead.
So this shows, uh, behind 242 Ogden. Um, you asked me to give a specific, so, uh, that's between Griffith and Franklin. So this actually represents where that road used to be. You see a car. It's actually nice the car parked there for me, um, so I can show you that they were driving. They used to be able to just drive right through, right? So what happened was, um, uh, apparently sometime in the 80s, there was a, uh, or early 90s, there was a collapse there. Took about, um, so I went out there, I took this picture. I also kind of measured, uh, from the existing road and, and all of this in, this indent and fencing, fencing that was put in by Jersey City. Uh, it's about 35 feet of roadway that was washed away with that collapse. Um, you know, that's all, you know, if you look at it, and you, you look over and you see, you see rock there on either side, this whole portion just collapsed out. So just showing you this, another image of that.
Before we move on, that's looking, what, north?
Yeah, that's looking north, sir.
And that's from?
So, so I'm behind 242 Ogden, and I'm looking north. Uh, so I'm looking toward Griffith.
Okay.
Yeah, that makes sense. So, so, yeah, so I'm basically around the edge there and I'm...
But you're not, you're not, that doesn't go all the way through to Franklin, correct?
Well, I mean, a good segue, I want to show you. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so what happens is, you can see, I backed up a little bit just to, just to show you that there's, it then, where the collapse happened, and then it widens back out again, right? So that, you know, that collapse kind of took that road with it. Um, and then I'll show you what happens when you look south. Now you get a block, right? Because they can't obviously allow anyone to go through there anymore. Um, so then it was just blocked off. So, so basically, that historic, you know, that, 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 be, be, in, in this site is, is, you know, about 1,000 feet away from, uh, the, you know, proposed site. I'm only, I'm only representing this to show that collapses like this can happen. They can happen without warning, and they can happen on previously constructed, you know, like, this, this was a Jersey City road. You know, this was, you know, this was an official road, Jersey, that then colla, suffered a catastrophic collapse. It is important to understand that part of when the P-Pod was, um, put in place by, you know, by, on the advocacy of the RNA, we, we did ask for a buffer, right? Because we wanted to make sure that development, new development, wasn't put right up against the cliff. It's very important. So from a public safety standpoint, it's really important that, um, you know, so I'm not even talking zone, I'm just saying, public safety is really want to keep this back from the cliff because we've seen catastrophic collapses like this. And I think that'll conclude my testimony.
Mr. Harrington, do you want to cross-examine anything?
Uh, just real quick.
Sure.
You pointed that there's been changes.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Uh, you referenced about the changes to the plans, uh, over the years, um, and it's, we can agree, right? It's common that, that changes are made after meeting with your group, uh, you know, good, better, and different?
Uh, that, that's common. I would say that this change, this has gone to, uh, significantly more changes than I've seen in some other plans. But yes, after meeting with our group, it is common for, for plans to change.
Okay, and are, uh, you referenced the milling and paving. Uh, are, are you aware that those are review agent comments that are typically, not typically, but that, that would be addressed after, uh, any approval and during construction?
I'll have to take your word for it.
Okay, and the traffic study, uh, there are a few typos there, but, uh, I don't know if you have the, the traffic study with you, but I can represent to you that, uh, in the introduction, it refers to 14 dwelling units and 14 cars. And in the, the traffic, uh, table analysis, trip generation summary, that also refers to 14 units and 14 cars. Or do you recollect that?
Uh, I do, but in the summary, they also reference 12 cars. And I know you're saying it's a typo, but, you know, it, that's what it says.
Okay, and in, uh, 240 Ogden Avenue, again, you said that's, that's about 1,000 square feet away from the subject property?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Weisman.
Thank you.
Can I turn the mic on, Commissioner?
Yeah, Eddie, could you say that into the mic?
Hmm? 1,000 feet away.
Yeah, I was agreeing that it was 1,000 feet away from the site, the proposed site where the application is.
That's a good clarification.
I'm sorry, I didn't ask the board. Does anybody have anything for Kern?
No, I, I jumped it.
It's okay.
I'm sorry.
It's all right, let it out. All right, thank you, appreciate it.
And then we have one more quick witness, Roger Hightman, who's on the Board of Riverview Neighborhood Association as distinct from its Development Committee.
I do. Uh, Hightman is H-E-I-T-M-A-N-N.
And, uh, just for the board, once again, Mr. Hightman is, uh, testifying as a fact witness. We're not qualifying him as an expert. I apologize. That's just a legal term we use, but, uh, just a fact witness. Go ahead, Ms. Hagiannis.
Yeah, um, yes, yeah. Mr. Hightman, what, what, what would you like to say to the board?
Well, I have a brief statement I'd like to read on behalf of RNA. Good evening. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Riverview Neighborhood Association. I'm the treasurer, and since I pay the bills, I know the substantial cost of continuing this fight against the proposed 152 Ogden project. Our members and residents thankfully have spoken because they've donated their own personal funds to continue to finance this opposition. I'm also an Ogden Avenue Cliffside resident for the past 35 years. Personally, I can testify... Personally, I can testify that I live about fifty feet away from the location, which is about a thousand feet north, that washed away back in the nineteen-eighties. It's worth noting that the city never attempted to repair or restore the washout and erected a guardrail instead around that cliff section, which is, to this day, remains dangerous and unstable. This is why we oppose the construction at the edge of the Palisades, which we feel is contrary to the Palisades Protection Overlay Ordinance and potentially a risky construction. The proposed building is out of character and scale with other buildings in the neighborhood at over eighty-five feet. Pullman's Hall, currently the tallest residential building, is only fifty feet. The proposed building will block light, air, and view corridors to neighboring buildings. Finally, we're concerned about the safety of the driveway and the Ogden Avenue crosswalk, which I understand has been partially mitigated here. But we're concerned that will trucks and emergency vehicles be able to turn onto wood place? We don't know. We also don't know the purpose of narrowing Ogden Avenue. We hope that the Planning Board will understand how opposed most residents are to the project for these good reasons and they uphold the Palisades Protection Ordinance and preserve the character of our neighborhood by voting no on this application. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that concludes.
And Mr. Harrington, do you have any cross-examination?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that, that concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Okay. And we'll allow you a closing statement after Mr. Harrington's, of course.
Sure.
Mr. Harrington?
She would go first.
She would go first? Ms. Hagiannis, I apologize, we'll offer you a closing statement first.
Well, so we do have to open it to the public. Ms. Hagiannis is going to give a closing before Mr. Harrington. So Chairman, if you would like to open to the public, then let Ms. Hagiannis give her closing and then we'll hear from Mr. Harrington. That's the proper order to do it in.
Okay.
I think that we need to caution everybody, obviously, Ms. Hagiannis represents the association. We just heard from your representative who voiced his concerns on behalf of the association. So I see a large number of people in the public. I suspect that they are members of your organization, Ms. Hagiannis. So they do not all get the opportunity to come up and repeat their position, which I suspect is the position that you and your representative have put forth here tonight.
I don't have a membership roster, so I'm not sure who's.
I don't either.
From RNA and who's not.
Well, obviously, we'll ask that question on your oath.
We have the chairman and the treasurer here. They don't know who's on their committee or no?
I, I don't want to put the onus on them. We'll ask, we'll ask everybody that comes up from the public on their oath and.
Okay. We brought this up with other groups before. And I like to be consistent when we pick it up with other groups before.
And the way we handled it back then was I asked everybody that came up to the microphone or if it was online, I asked everybody online. Remember online, when we were online? Remember way back? Okay, so at this point, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment?
Yes, my name is Vito Bernetti.
We just, we do, sorry, we need to swear you in. And we're going to give you three minutes. And if you could speak slowly so Mike can get everything that you say on record.
Yes, I do. Vito Bernetti, Cedar Avenue, Hackensack, New Jersey. I'm speaking.
So Mr. Bernetti, obviously, you're not.
I am.
You don't live in the Heights or you live in the Heights or you previously?
I lived on Ogden Avenue, probably about a thousand feet from the sinkhole that Roger discussed. I'm a, one of the founders of RNA from nineteen-eighty-three. I was instrumental in the development with RNA for the P pod, worked with Robert Cotter, who I'm sure you were all aware of.
We've met.
To make sure that that was passed and put into the ordinance.
Okay, so.
So I have history.
Are you a current?
And I would like to make my statement.
Sure. Are you a current member of the RNA or not?
I am a, what do they, what do they call Nancy Pelosi? A member.
Emeritus?
Emeritus.
Okay. Perfect. Go ahead then.
Okay. I have rewritten my statement, but I wanted to make some quick comments. As to the architect, what his testimony was, he never really said whether they adhered to three forty-five point sixty-two of the Residential Design Standard. And I'm not going to read it, I don't have the time, but it does include the word shall. It's not a, well, I think we will apply that standard. It's a shall apply that standard. The only thing he said was that he patronizingly stated that he tried to match the color tone of the two surrounding buildings on either side of the project. He mentioned multiple times that this is a great mass development. It's going to have an important and a great impact and it's unique in the neighborhood. Yes, it's an R-three zone, but it's a spot zoned. If the rest of the neighborhood is looked at, it's mainly R-one, I think now, meaning one and two-family housing. So this is definitely going to be out of design and it's inappropriate pursuant to three forty-five sixty-two. The closest is Pullman Hall, which was built in the eighteen-hundreds, and that's literally only forty-five, about, well, it's, it's double the size, this new project. The rebuttable, the rebuttal by the engineer, when he was asked by the developer's attorney, he did not contest any of the facts of our engineer and our expert witness. All he admitted was that there is no decision, they're waiting for a decision from the Jersey City M U A. So for anyone to be able to say it's a major and minor is really irrelevant because there hasn't been a decision by the city. And therefore, I think, with all due respect, a decision by the Planning Board at this point is premature because we don't know whether there is a decision that you can base your interpretation of the testimony and the plans on. Also, I'm an attorney. Well, I recently retired, but I, I want to say something before it may be mentioned by the developer's attorney. The expert did not give a net opinion. A net opinion is based purely on opinion with no basis and no fact. This expert, RNA's expert, reviewed the reports, looked at the drawings, based his interpretation of the Jersey City zoning, specifically the groundwater, the P pod, which is an official part of the statute, and also brought into the, into this discussion that there is a state NJ DEP standards that we have to look at.
And that's.
Is aware of, I'm not going to bring into the mess of it, but there's a prerogative writ appeal in the Superior Court of the Board of Adjustment.
Thank you, sir. That is your time. That's, I apologize, that's your time. Anybody else from public? If you'd like to comment, please come on up.
If not, I'll wait till someone gives me back my time. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, you have three minutes. Sorry, you can only testify once.
Should have shoved it over to me and I would, but my name. Yes, it's. Caroline Katz Mount. My home address is seventy-four Sherman Place, Jersey City.
Good evening. We have three minutes for you.
Yes, I'll be even quicker. I, I've lived in Jersey City since the early nineties and one of the, the great joys that I've had here is working with different neighborhood associations. I'm with the Pershing Field Neighborhood Association, Association, and we work closely with, with Riverview. And a few of us are here tonight because we share the concerns that have been presented to you by Riverview. We share their, their dedication to, to keep our community safe from, from whether, you know, from all kinds of, of changes that have come here, whether it's from developers or, or even now with, with something much more serious that, what might happen with another, you know, excuse me, with another fall or, you know, with another destruction of part of the community by, by having houses that are not appropriate. And we've seen developers come in when we've had meetings where they've wanted to destroy group, where they've wanted to destroy homes that have been in this city for a long time and homes that are livable for people who are not wealthy, who are not going to buy condominiums, but who add a great deal to our city and to our communities. And I'm just here because I've wanted to support the great work that Riverview is doing and to hope that you'll recognize the importance of the reasons that they've come to you to support, to, to support their work and, and to deny the application from the organization over here. Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Okay, anybody else? Please come on up.
Kate Donnelly, two oh six Ogden Avenue. Yes. I, I, I am on RNA.
She's also a citizen of Jersey City.
Exactly. And so I would, if you're not going to let me enter something into the record, then I would like to object to that.
Okay, Ms. Donnelly, obviously, you are a member of the RNA.
Yes.
Just for the record, we have to say it, you're also a member of the zoning board that.
I was and I resigned.
But you did vote on this case earlier.
Yes, I did.
I just, I just want to get it out in the open.
Yes, absolutely.
I'm not deciding anything right now. I just want to get it out in the open, that's all.
Yep, absolutely.
And having voted on the matter.
And having voted on the matter and then resigned.
But Ms.
Questioned to the lawyer earlier where we questioned that you.
Yes, I did.
You did.
Yes, I did.
Now you're going to get back up and repeat again, but we don't allow, we don't allow nobody to talk twice.
You know what? I'm not helping the matter. So, but I do object. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Donnelly.
I do. Sure. My name is Dan Blydner, D A N B L I D N E R. My address is one forty Ogden Ave, Jersey City, New Jersey, right in the Heights, right next door to this planned construction.
And Mr. Blydner, before you start, we have three minutes for you, but are you a member of the RNA?
I am not a member of the RNA.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
I'm big fans of their work and the community. I'm not a member. I want to thank the board for your tireless efforts and all your hard work. This is not easy. It's my first meeting like this, so.
Come back anytime.
We'll see. But I have something to read. I have lived there for twelve years. I lived there with my girlfriend, who's lived there for eight years. We've seen the community thrive and grow around us. And we don't feel that this is, development is in keeping with our community and with the neighborhood. So with that, I want to echo the concerns and challenges that have been raised thus far by my neighbors and community members. I want to reiterate what many others have mentioned. The number one concern here really is around safety. This project does not seem to be a safe one. It seems to be unprecedented and based on the planning that I've seen, fairly incomplete in terms of its threshold for the safety concerns of the neighborhood. I think that we need to be concerned about this instability and any unforeseen challenges that could arise, that could cause grave injury to myself, my neighbors, my community. This is a great community. We have a number of members out today. I don't know if the board recalls, but upon the online version of these meetings, we had well over a hundred people in attendance for this. This matter is something that the community does take very seriously. And we would ask the board to please deny this application as we do not think it is in keeping with the aesthetic, the feel, and the community that we have worked so hard over the past decade to create. That's, that's all I have.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, anybody else? Please come on up. It's nice to actually see people speaking in front of us again. This is great.
Good evening.
Yeah.
Jeffrey, with a J, Budney, B U D N E Y, one forty Ogden Avenue, one R. I'm across the hallway from Dan.
And Mr. Budney, are you a member of RNA?
I am not.
Okay, thank you, sir.
So again, thank you for the time. I'm here tonight on behalf of myself, my wife, my five-year-old son, and my one-year-old daughter, who live at the address at one forty Ogden. I'll, I'll say first, from reviewing all the information that's been presented over a number of meetings, I don't find that this development is compatible with the neighborhood based on planning rules. The site may be zoned R-three, but the residential properties directly adjacent to where the actual building will be constructed are not R-three zoned. The property zoning seems to be more compatible with the commercial site down the cliff to the east, which is an industrial recycling facility, which certainly wouldn't be appropriate if that was placed on Ogden Avenue. So why should this one property be the only eight-story building on Ogden Avenue? It just does not seem compatible with the neighborhood. I'll also echo all the safety concerns. That had been brought up through the meetings. So I don't need to repeat all that, but I will add just, you know, an observation of being someone who lives right there, who lives right adjacent to the property. My parking space is right on the property line, at the very edge of the, of the cliff looking down into Hoboken. There's a very large tree that's on the edge of that property. It's not, you know, it's not represented on any of the diagrams that focus more on the ground, right? But there's a very large tree that's right at the edge of where they want to build that I can't imagine that that tree is still going to be there after the development. And what does that do to the concerns of, you know, the stability of the ground, whether or not that soil is going to give way, and then what that's going to do, you know, to where I live, directly opposite where that, where all that construction and all that disturbance of the ground is going to happen? Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Moni Carrera. Yeah, it, like, I'm trying to, okay. All right, there we go. Moni Carrera, H E R R E R A, and I live at one eighteen Ogden Avenue.
Ms. Carrera, good evening. Are you a member of RNA?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, go ahead. We have three minutes for you.
Okay. I live on Ogden Avenue now for twenty years and I live there with my husband and two children. My oldest is visually impaired and my concern is of safety. He is fifteen and, you know, is learning to cross the streets to be an independent and productive member of, of the community. He's learning how to get to the light rail and we would have to pass this property on our way there. So my concern is that you're talking about two driveway next to each other that he has to navigate in order to, you know, let's say, get to the light rail. And the way that I'm visualizing it is basically, you know, you're, you're having, he's going to have to cross sidewalks with no traffic control as if, as he's crossing a two-way street. That's how I'm visualizing it. You know, you have two parking lots side by side that he has to, you know, cross where he isn't really able to even see, you know, let's say the car that's closest to his right, but now he also has to figure out the car that's coming on the other side of the driveway. So that's my concern in terms of safety. Let's see, what else? I, I don't, I don't even, I don't feel that that building belongs in that area. It's just, it's going to stand out. It's not, you know, it, it's not going to complement it. So it, it doesn't, it doesn't belong there. And also, I'm concerned about my property. I know in the years that we've been living there, I've seen us some dirt in the back. I know in the years that we've been living there, I've seen us some dirt in the back. You know, whether it's rain, or snow, or whatever is, you know, washing away some of that. You know, I know that I've seen it, and I know that, you know, it's been happening throughout the year, so I'm not sure what, you know, the impact of having this type of construction is gonna have on my property also. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, we appreciate your time.
Yes, I do. Oh, perfect. Yep, my name is Courtney Walker, C-E-O-U-R-T-N-E-Y, last name Walker. I'm a resident of 310 Palisade Ave., Jersey City. It's right around the corner from 152 Ogden, so at the intersection of Ravine and Palisade Ave. and Wood Place as well.
Okay, so before you start your testimony, are you a member of RNA?
No.
Okay, thank you, you have three minutes.
I just want to say I agree with prior statements made by members of the public regarding safety concerns and neighborhood fit. I'd also like to add some additional concerns around traffic safety. My building being right by the traffic light on Palisade Ave., Wood Place, and Ravine there, that particular intersection is rather busy, and I've seen many drivers run a red light there almost on a daily basis. The intersection is also of a rather tricky nature due to the fact that Ravine and Wood Place intersect Palisade Ave. at slightly different points, and it doesn't create your traditional four-corner crosswalk. I have concerns with the proposed project on Ogden, since Ogden is a rather narrow road and a one-way street nature. Wood Place is a one-way street, and Ferry is also one-way going into Ogden. So the narrow street, the large project, this is gonna push a lot of traffic onto Palisade, potentially creating confusion for drivers. And with the proximity to the rather tricky intersection of Palisade Ave. and Wood Place, I would like the council to deny the application as is, as I don't believe that it's conforming to traffic safety, as well as the other testimony people have provided. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, we appreciate it.
Yes. Jennifer Segal, S-E-G-A-L.
And your address, Ms. Segal?
310 Palisade Ave.
Okay, and are you a member of RNA?
No, I'm not.
Okay, thank you, we have three minutes for you.
So as I said, I live at 310 Palisade Ave. It's right around the corner from 152 Ogden. I agree with the prior statements made by members of the public regarding safety concerns and neighborhood fit. The proposed building is wildly out of character with the current neighborhood as is. It creates a dangerous precedent for our neighborhood, both in terms of the large build, the eight-floor building, and being so close to the cliff without that retaining wall. So I ask council to please deny this application as is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Alicia, A-L-I-C-I-A, Rogers, R-O-D, G-R-S, I live at 11 Jefferson Ave.
And Ms. Rogers, before you start, you are a member of RNA, or not?
No.
Okay, and just for everyone's notice, it's 10:28 currently. We do have a hard stop at 10:30 tonight. We still have closing statements from both attorneys, so I don't see a decision being made tonight, but I just want to put it out there. Okay, you have three minutes, ma'am.
While I don't live in Ogden, I walk past this property daily. I live a quarter mile away, just off Palisades, where there's a proposal for a 10-story building. And I know that a building of this height will set precedence for future builds in our neighborhood. Slide number one of the architect's deck for this property on Ogden does not reflect what the actual street and the buildings on the adjacent lots look like. It is being proposed as if it's in a well-spaced industrial area. In reality, this neighborhood has small one-to-three-story homes. The buildings on either side, while anomalies for the neighborhood en masse, they are still only about half the site, half the height of the proposed build. This building will tower over and disrupt community life in this neighborhood as we know it in regards to construction, sunlight, traffic, and parking. I can't even begin to wrap my mind around the construction phase. Where are the trucks and flatbeds going to park? Already, the weekly Coca-Cola truck delivering, delivering to the assisted living building down the street creates a giant morning traffic jam. As a resident of the Heights, I ask the board and the city to really consider the impact of this project to the larger Heights community. Thank you.
My name is Sophia Wang, W-A-N-G, and I live at 25 Christopher Columbus Avenue, downtown Jersey City. I'm testifying. I'm not a member of the RNA. I don't live in the area. Okay, so I think there is, can I, can I speak now? Okay, so, thank you, the board, and it's really an honor here to be here at the planning board meeting. And I really want to point out one perspective, which I think hasn't been brought up yet, which is the future residents of this proposed building. So my partner and I have moved into downtown Jersey City, and we're looking to move as our leases are coming up in six months for renewal. And the Heights is a place that we're really considering to live. And right now, hearing today about the proposed project, especially seeing the architecture plan, we're really worrying about if I hadn't been here, hadn't been politically connected and engaged with the zoning board meeting that leading to this planning board meeting, I would not have known the safety concerns that have been posed today, that is not shown in the architecture plan, and probably will not even be shown in the future advertisements going out for renters or condominiums for potential home buyers. So as a potential future resident for the area, and a current resident of Jersey City, I really ask the board to consider whether or not this is a really good, safety-safe place for future residents to leave. I haven't seen this perspective brought up, and I think like, it's very common that like, future residents that haven't been in the area, they probably don't know about it, but I happen to be here, and I want to bring this perspective out. I'm really concerned of the safety, and if, to be frank, I probably would have chosen to live there if I had not heard of the meeting. But given what had been discussed today, I would never leave this building if it's, after its proposed construction because of the safety concerns. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, we appreciate your time. So obviously, we're gonna continue on with public comment at the next meeting. Ms. Hagianis, you'll have a closing statement. Mr. Harrington, you'll have a closing statement. And we'll hear from planning staff. So I'll entertain a motion to carry to a date certain, February 6th, please.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to, excuse me, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to carry case P-2023-0040 to a date certain of February 6th.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded to carry. Could we have a roll call, please?
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres. Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries on a motion to carry to the next meeting.
Okay, council? Give me five minutes.
Sir, give me five minutes, we'll talk. Outside. Other council. I'm sorry, you're out. Other council, you're not the only one in the room still.
I thought he called you too. Okay, so-
Council, um- Where is it?
I don't even know.
If everybody could exit the room quietly, the board does have other business to conduct. Thank you.
Where am I? Where am I? 7B? That's fine. Okay, council, we're talking about case P-2023-0040 as a site plan amendment for 319 Fifth Street. We can offer you a date certain, February 6th?
Yes, if we can't hear it tonight, I'll be back on February 6th.
Okay.
But thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, council, and we'll preserve notice with that. Okay, I'll entertain memorialization of resolutions, please.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to memorialize the following resolutions. I have three. First resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City applicant is 650 Grove LLC for extension of final major site plan approval at 650 Grove Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, block 6101, lot number two, case number P-2023-0065. Second resolution of the City of Jersey City Planning Board in the matter of Can X-A Group LLC for conditional use, Class 5 Cannabis Micro Retail Establishment at 638 Communipaw Avenue, block 17905, lot 7, case number is P-23-071, decided on November 14, 2023, application for conditional use. And the last resolution is the resolution of the City of the Planning Board of Jersey City applicant Grove Street Partners LLC for extension of final major site plan approval at 659 Grove Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, block 6002, lot 8, case number P-2023-0066.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for memorialization. Could I have a roll call, please?
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez. Aye.
Wow.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres. And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Okay, um, I don't need to do this in executive session. Guys, I just want to thank you. But, once again, this is an open application. If anyone, 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 top-down, anybody approaches you to speak about anything on this application-
No.
Write to me, all right? I'm not asking you to sell him out, but give him my number.
Or counsel's, right?
Or counsel's number.
Yeah.
And we'll stop that immediately. Anybody, politically, neighborhood, whatever. Shouldn't, shouldn't we have cops here? We have security outside.
Do we? Okay.
But yeah, any-
Yeah, motion to adjourn, please. Motion to adjourn.
Okay, good.
Okay, thank you, guys.
I looked at you like, what? Don't you want to go?
I gotta go to the bathroom. I gotta go to the bathroom.
Okay.